Good evening Burbank community, council members, staff, and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, March 30th, 2021. During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19 and in the interests of public health and safety, council members will be participating in an online city council meeting. The public will not be available to physically attend today's meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, the city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in city meetings. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Jimenez. Good to see ya.
Good evening, Mayor.
Uh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony.
Present.
Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
And Mayor Frutos.
Happy to be here. There will be two periods of public comment tonight, one for general public comment and one for the public hearing. If you would like to participate in the general public comment, please call in now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. Tonight, the council will be adjourning in memory of retired City of Burbank fire engineer Arthur Popkin, who passed away on March 2nd. Art was born in Brooklyn, New York on June 12th, 1937. He entered the United States Navy at the age of 19, where he served for four years aboard the USS Meredith and the USS Stainaker as a fire control technician. He went on to work for the Beverly Hills Fire Department for a year before hired by the Burbank Fire in 1964 to install new station equipment. During the city's redevelopment era, Art was part of a team that salvaged and resold parts of city-owned buildings that were going to be demolished. Half the proceeds from these sales went to the city's redevelopment agency and half went towards restoring the two antique fire engines of the Burbank Fire Historical Club. Art retired as a fire engineer in 1989 after 25 years with the department. Art had many passions, including antiques, fire memorabilia, auto swap meets, and the Burbank Historical Society. Art was a Burbank resident and is survived by his wife Sue. Chief Garcia, I'd like to call you to the podium, sir. Would you please say a few words on Art? Thank you, chief.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council. Mayor Frutos, thank you for the kind words you've shared there on engineer, retired engineer Art Popkin. Unfortunately, as we've unfortunately done this previously, due to COVID, we're unable to celebrate Art's life as we normally would. Traditionally, we would have Art's family here so that we could thank them for his service and honor his commitment to our community. However, we are thankful that technology does allow us to utilize a virtual platform and in doing that, we can do so with this disability. Engineer Popkin served our community for 25 years. I did not know engineer Popkin personally, as he retired prior to the onboarding of any of our current members. So that tells us that he was able to enjoy many years of life in retirement. I do know that Art took great pride in being a Burbank firefighter and served our community well. He had a strong affinity for tradition and of the fire service and as that was very active in our Burbank Fire Department muster club, which is primarily worked upon to be able to, as you mentioned, restore a lot of our antique equipment and apparatus. Art loved the fire service and he truly loved to serve our community of Burbank. Art will forever be part of our Burbank Fire Department Fire Family. And on behalf of the men and women of the Burbank Fire Department, I would like to extend my condolences to the Art Popkin family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chief. I'd like to call on Vice Mayor Telemontes with your background experience as a firefighter. Would you like to share any thoughts, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I did get to work with engineer Popkin. You know, he had a close relationship with retired battalion chief Gary Sutherland. They would be, they would always go to swap meets. They would look, they were interested in antiques, antiques, especially vehicles. So they had a great relationship for many, many years. And engineer Popkin was a great engineer. He was very outspoken. He told you where you stood, where you stood as far as he was concerned. But nonetheless, I want to wish his family, our thoughts and prayers, and may he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think councilmember Springer, you knew Art, I believe?
I've known Art, I knew Art for about 25 years and I'm grateful for his friendship. And Art, we remember you. Thank you.
Art, I'd like, Vice Mayor has stated, for some reason, you always called up the Vice Mayor and I and you definitely let us know what was wrong with the city. And rest in peace. We'll miss you and thank you for your words of wisdom that we used to share on what I should be doing because you never hesitated to get ahold of me and tell me what I should be doing better. Art, rest in peace. Again, to the family, the entire city council, our deepest condolences to the friends, family of Art Popkin. And we are so grateful for your service to our city on behalf of the entire city council, Art. Rest in peace. We have five announcements on city's business this evening. Number one, the second round of the city's Small Business Assistance Program is now open. The city is partnering with the California Community Economic Development Association to offer assistance to eligible self-employed, micro enterprise, or small business owners impacted by COVID-19. Self-employed contractors, entrepreneurs, gig economy workers, or businesses with less than 200 employees are eligible to apply. The application period closes Monday, April the 5th at 5:00 PM. Funds will be used to provide forgivable loans between $10,000 and $20,000 on a first-come, first-served basis until funding is fully expanded. All applications must be submitted online at burbank.cceda.com. Again, you must submit an application online at burbank.cceda.com. Number two, the application period for the second round of the city's Emergency Rental Assistance Program will begin Monday, April the 5th, 2021 at 8:00 AM and closes on Friday, April the 16th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Low-income renters financially impacted by COVID-19 may be eligible up to $1,000 per month, up to three months, for assistance with unpaid rent, future rent, and delinquent utility bills. Applications will be considered on a first-come, first-served basis until funding is exhausted. A waiting list will be established as applications are received. Only one application per household will be accepted. Please call the Application Help Center at 818-238-5180. Again, that phone number is 818-238-5180, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. With any questions, or please visit the city's website at burbankca.gov for more information and to access the application link. Number three, passport services. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is currently open for passport services. Processing times for routine service is 10 to 12 weeks and expedited service is four to six weeks. Appointments are highly encouraged. Please visit burbankca.gov/passport. Again, for passport information, please visit burbankca.gov/passport. To schedule an appointment or call 818-238-5851. Again, that phone number is 818-238-5851. The City Clerk's Office is also accepting walk-ins, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM and from 1:30 PM to 3:30 PM. And Friday, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM. Please note, processing times and accommodations for walk-ins are based on availability and may change. Number four, the Airport Authority. The City Clerk's Office will be accepting applications for two scheduled vacancies on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority beginning April 1st, 2021. Each appointment will be for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2025. The deadline to submit an online application is Friday, April 30th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office Again, that email address is burbankca.gov/bccap... correction, BCC applications. Item number five, General Plan Workshop. The Community Development Department will be hosting a California Environmental Quality Act scoping meeting for state-required updates to the Burbank 2035 General Plan, including the Six Cycle Housing Element and Safety Element for 2021 to 2029 on March 31st at 6:00 PM. The city will present an overview of the proposed plan, updates, and the public can provide input on environmental issues. For more information, please visit burbankhousingelement.com. Again, the website is burbankhousingelement.com. Or call Senior Planner Lisa Frank at 818-238-5250. Again, if you just want to pick up the phone and call, your contact person is Senior Planner Lisa Frank at 818-238-5250. As a reminder, if you would like to participate in tonight's general public comment period, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. We have three proclamations this evening. Our first proclamation is in recognition of Cesar Chavez Day on March 31st. And the proclamation is, let me show it to you real quick, very honored to sign it. Whereas Cesar Chavez was born March 31st, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, and died on April 23rd, 1993, leaving an inspiring legacy for all humanity. And whereas Cesar Chavez, a veteran of the United States Navy, dedicated himself to fight for equality, justice, and dignity for all Americans as early as 1949. And whereas in 1962, Cesar Chavez founded and led for almost three decades United Foreign Workers Union of America, which became a symbol of empowerment and hope for many workers. And whereas the value of Cesar Chavez includes service to others, sacrifice, nonviolence, respect for life, celebrating community, and tolerance. And whereas in August 2000, legislation was signed to establish March 31st as Cesar Chavez Day, which engages thousands of youth annually in service projects to honor him as one of our nation's greatest leaders. And now therefore, Iba Frutos, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2021, as Cesar E. Chavez Day in the City of Burbank and encourage all citizens to celebrate Chavez's life and work by participating in community service projects. Si se puede! At this time, I would like to invite Principal of Dolores Huerta Middle School, Dr. Jennifer Magalim Ray, to say a few words. Good evening, ma'am, and I hope I didn't butcher your last name too bad. Welcome.
You actually did pretty well, I have to say.
Oh, boy, I like that.
I go by Dr. Meg for short for that very reason.
Okay.
Thank you. Our ASB president, Kayla Cruz, was on this meeting earlier when we did the check, but I think she got kicked out. I was, I had invited her to come and speak a few words about Dolores Huerta because I think that a lot of people in Burbank don't know a lot about her. And as many of you know, we recently had a name change to our school and we are so proud of the new name that was selected and to be named after a woman and someone from California and from the area. We actually have a number of staff members who have connections with her. And so we're really excited over the next few months to have some renaming ceremonies and invite her to come and join us for some of those. So I thank you very much for this proclamation and we will hang it up. It'll be one of the first things we have at our school with our new name on it.
Outstanding. Thank you, Principal Dr. Meg. And for the members of the community, I encourage you, take a trip. It's about 2 hours and 20 minutes to go to Tehachapi, where the Cesar Chavez Museum is there. And it's a great place to take a picnic lunch. It's a beautiful landscaped area. I've been there several times. It's a great weekend trip if the weather is shaping the way it is. I encourage all the Burbank residents to, if you can, take a trip up there with your family, take a picnic lunch. And while you're there, being a train kind of guy that I am, the famous Tehachapi Loop, which is right next to the museum, where you can watch the trains go around, this big old loop. But enough said with that, moving on with the city's business. Okay, our second proclamation, council members and community members, is declaring April 4th through the 10th as National Library Week in the City of Burbank. Whereas libraries are the heart of their cities, serving their communities. And whereas today, libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone, everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas in time of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an important role in supporting their communities in person and virtually. And whereas to adapt to our ever-changing world, libraries are expanding and adapting their resource to continue to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, Iba Frutos, Mayor of the City of Burbank, proclaim April 4th through the 10th, 2021, as National Library Week in the City of Burbank. During this week, I encourage all residents to please visit their library in person. Bring your kids, bring, bring the elders and, you know, online to access the resources and services. And the library has this really unique app that it takes you to the archives of old pictures of the City of Burbank. With that, I would like to welcome our library board chair, Dr. Emily Weisberg. Ms. Weisberg, would you say a few words to the community as the chair of the library?
I would be happy to. Super cool. Thank you, Mayor Frutos. Thank you, council members. Thank you for tonight's proclamation acknowledging National Library Week. I know I speak for the entire Board of Library Trustees when I thank you for your ongoing support of our public libraries. So, okay, National Library Week is this week and we know it celebrates the power and importance of all libraries. But I wanted to take this opportunity to brag about our libraries. So, couple of pieces of exciting information. In February alone, our phenomenal library staff helped circulate 18,000 items via 3,500 individual curbside pickup appointments. That's February alone. The library distributed tax forms, kits for children's programs, and printouts for the curbside copy service. Our Book Connection Program, which allows patrons to submit requests for curated books, selected 1,000 items for 90 patrons. And along with all of these services, our staff continues to offer much-needed programming, such as a series of workshops on mental health. Our Spark Digital Media Lab Program, introducing people to a career in video editing and leading a monthly internal city employee book club. Great quote that I love about libraries that Caitlin Moran wrote. She says, "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft, and a festival. They are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold rainy island, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer, but a citizen instead." Over the past year, when it seemed like the world had stopped, our libraries kept going. Under the bold leadership of Library Services Director Elizabeth Goldman, our amazing library staff found ways to adapt to the changing needs of our Burbank community and address those needs with thoughtfulness, care, and creativity. As the mayor mentioned, our libraries are now open, so you can check the website for details. And our commitment to helping Burbank recover through job skills training, student support, and community programming remains stronger than ever. We're excited to continue growing alongside our city and serving it as an innovative space where community members come to think, learn, explore, and grow. And we look forward to celebrating next year's library, National Library Week in person with all of you. So thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, council members, and hope to see you at the library soon.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg, and thank you and your fellow board members. You guys rock. Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is a little bit more, I mean, they're all important, but this one here is very serious. The next proclamation is to condemn racism, xenophobia, and intolerance toward Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. Whereas across the nation during the COVID-19 pandemic, inflammatory xenophobic rhetoric has been used against individuals of Asian-American and Pacific Islander descent. And whereas the World Health Organization has cautioned against attributing to the spread of this pandemic to any ethnically, and whereas nevertheless, nearly 3,800 incidents of anti-Asian discrimination were reported to the Stop Asian-American Pacific Islander, AAPI, Hate Center in the last year. And whereas Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders make up nearly 7% of the population in the United States and 13% of the population of the City of Burbank, we have made lasting contributions to American society. And whereas on November 10th, 2020, the City of Burbank issued a proclamation condemning prejudice and promoting inclusivity, equality, and diversity, and seeks to reaffirm its commitment to creating a thriving community where all citizens feel safe and welcomed. Whereas the City of Burbank partners with the Burbank Human Relations Council to address hate crimes and seeks to build bridges of understanding between the diverse groups in our community. And whereas the City of Burbank supports the rights and freedoms of all residents to practice and embrace their heritage without fear of persecution. And now therefore, Iba Frutos, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do here proclaim the City of Burbank as a world-class city, denounces racist, xenophobic, and intolerant attitudes and actions toward Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, not just in Burbank community, but nationwide, and reaffirms its commitment to making Burbank a safe, thriving community for all. All five of us on this council are very committed to that last statement. We are joined tonight by our city treasurer, Crystal Palmer. Ms. Palmer, would you like to say a few words to the members of the community and the council members?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Frutos, Vice Mayor Telemontes, council members, and the Burbank community with us here today. My name is Crystal Palmer and I'm your city treasurer. As an Asian-American, proud to call Burbank my home, I thank you for making this important statement condemning and denouncing race system, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. While I have been fortunate to have always felt welcome in our diverse and tolerant community in Burbank, that has not always been the case for others in the country. Over the past year, we have seen numerous incidents of hate and violence against the Asian-American community across the US. We have been shocked by the news reports, unprovoked name-calling and racial slurs, assaults on the elderly as they simply walk around in their neighborhood, the killing of innocent people just doing their jobs and trying to provide a better life for their families. All of these senseless attacks on hard-working and law-abiding Asian-Americans are unambiguously wrong and do not reflect the values that our country was founded on. And while there have been an unprecedented number of incidents over this past year, we also must face the reality that the Asian-American community has experienced discrimination throughout its history. Here in Burbank, we know that we cannot silently sit back and do nothing when confronted with racism and discrimination. From the work of the Burbank Human Relations Council to a Racial Equity and Diversity Council Subcommittee to a recent proclamation condemning prejudice and promoting inclusivity, equality, and diversity, it is our responsibility as citizens to always be vigilant, to look out for one another, and to reaffirm our commitment to a society where people are treated equally, regardless of how they look or where they are from. Burbank is also home to many of the world's largest media and entertainment companies. And today, we call on them to help reinforce the message that Asian-Americans are Americans. So much of how our children in our country and the rest of the world learn about other cultures comes from movies and television. And our entertainment companies have a responsibility to portray Asian-Americans as fully authentic people, rather than simple stereotypes. More than just a nerdy student, more than just a frugal and hard-working immigrant, more than just this quirky sidekick for comedic relief. Asian-Americans are also athletes, soldiers, CEOs, farmers, government officials, and blue-and-white collar workers, just like other Americans in this country. With the roles you define and your casting choices, you can make a huge difference in how Asian-Americans are perceived. Today, we stand in solidarity, not just with the Asian-American community, but with all of the other groups in history and at present who have ever faced racism and discrimination. While we have come a long way, we still have a difficult road ahead of us. But I am hopeful for myself, for our community... But I am hopeful for myself, for our community and for our children, we are headed in the right direction. I truly believe that most of us have good intentions and want to do the right thing. We need to move forward and work to heal the divisions caused by anger and resentment. We also need to be unafraid to call out bias when we see it and to make it clear that we will not tolerate any crimes in any form. With honest conversations that acknowledge our fears and prejudices and a genuine openness to learning about other cultures, we can, in time and with hard work, live up to the promise of America, a land of freedom and opportunity, not just for a select few, but for all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report out this evening to the members of the public and the council?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Metro regarding a Bus Rapid Transit Project update. Will the Metro Representative Scott Hartwell please commence the presentation? And welcome to our council meeting.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Welcome. You have the mic, sir.
Okay, bear with me. Um, okay, share my screen now. Bring up a presentation. Hey, so again, thank you for hearing us tonight. It's good to be back. It's been a little while since we've been out here to brief the Burbank City Council on our Nohoda-Pasadena project, the BRT, which we are excited to be implementing across the corridor. So I'm here to provide you an update. Uh, we've had a, we've had a lot going on over the last several months. So I'll walk you through sort of our draft EIR release and, and sort of what some of the feedback that we received on that entailed. And then I'll walk you through our, our recommended proposed project and some of the refinements associated with that, particularly in Burbank. So just to start off with some project goals for Burbank, these goals have been pretty consistent since we started working on this project. And for starters, one of the big issues we know with Burbank is the, the high jobs-to-housing ratio that the city experiences, namely because of a lot of the employees coming into work in Burbank and some of the transportation issues and congestion that, uh, that has resulted from that. So we're looking to create a robust and reliable service that helps to address that issue, but also that works really well for Burbank residents as well as for employees working traditional and non-traditional hours. And one of the things that we discovered after working with and doing outreach with a lot of the studios is the fact that a lot of their employees do work off-hours, hours that take them well into the evenings or maybe in the middle of the day. And so one of the things we want to do is create a robust transit service that will, that will serve people at, uh, at all of these hours and work well into the evenings. And of course, we want to provide convenient access to local and regional activity centers, downtown Burbank, the media district, Metrolink, several bus lines, as well as the city's bicycle network, and really try to create an appealing alternative to the automobile to help get people out of their cars and in turn improve air quality and create a healthier city overall. So just to speak quickly about the history of the project in Burbank, we've really been coordinating with the city dating back to the technical study that was completed back in twenty seventeen. That was really the first effort to look at implementing a BRT or to study how a BRT could work within Burbank and along the corridor overall. At that point in time, we had identified several different potential alignments within Burbank, including a Chandler alignment, one on Magdolia, one on Alameda, and of course, one on Olive. And so we took those various alignment concepts into an alternatives analysis phase that included a community outreach effort, community meetings to really vet these with the public and with the city. And overall, what we, what came out of that was fairly strong support for the Olive Avenue alignment, both from the city and the public. We've heard general support for the project overall from, uh, from the public in Burbank at various meetings that we've held throughout the course of the planning process. And as we started the environmental phase of the project, we coordinated with the city to really hone in on this Olive Avenue alignment for the BRT and developed a concept for the draft EIR. And as we worked with the city, there, there's really two fundamental ways to implement dedicated bus lanes along Olive. Now, the way Olive is configured, you have a couple of travel lanes in each direction. You have that center turn lane and you have a parking lane. And so really, there's two ways to do it. You could either convert an existing travel lane in each direction into a dedicated bus lane, or you can convert the existing parking lanes into a curb-running set of dedicated bus lanes. And so after working with the city, they had recommended that we pursue a, a curb-running type option that would operate in the parking lane as opposed to taking a travel lane, which I think there were concerns that that would lead to some additional congestion along Olive. In addition to that, the city had recommended a bridge, an Olive Avenue Bridge Station to serve the Metrolink Station just to the north of that. And so we'll talk more about that as well. Because we know that connecting directly to Metrolink has been a high priority for the city as it relates to this project, really since the beginning of our work on the project. So this is conceptually what the project could look like with a curb-running type configuration. This was the option that we studied in our draft EIR, which we'll talk more about in a minute. You see the curb-running bus lane in red there next to a station and you see the station there on the curb and what that could look like. And then you'll see the two travel lanes preserved in each direction next to that. So then, as it relates to the EIR, we did circulate a draft EIR late last year, starting in October and ending in late December. It was a sixty-four-day public comment period. We held two virtual public hearings during that time and we received nearly five hundred comments on, along the corridor in response to the draft EIR. Now, as it relates to the Burbank area, most of the comments were supportive. Some of the general themes that we heard from the comments included people highlighting the need for pedestrian safety, um, as well as station accessibility, people concerned about the potential impacts to parking and how that could affect local businesses, compatibility with Burbank's Complete Streets Plan, as well as support for a station at Olive in Verdugo and Sparks, which we had currently shown on our maps as an optional station. And so some of the highlights from the draft EIR, it's pretty straightforward. There were no, there were no significant and unavoidable impacts. Um, most of the less-than-significant impacts were really related to construction activities. And of course, as we advance toward construction, we will certainly coordinate with the city to minimize what those impacts would be. Um, in addition to that, the project, as we went through our environmental analysis, determines that the project would reduce vehicle miles traveled, which is the primary metric in environmental impact reports for looking at transportation impacts. And so with that reduction in VMT would come a transportation benefit in the form of reduced congestion, which would in turn have an air quality benefit. Uh, there'd be less energy consumed, less greenhouse gas emissions produced. And there would also be a noise benefit as well, a reduction in noise. So then, the city itself submitted a comment letter as part of the draft Environmental Impact Report Review Period. So we, we took the, the basic, uh, primary issues and concerns that were included in that letter and bulleted them out here and I'll go through and talk about each one of them as we go. The Olive Avenue Bridge Station and what we're proposing for that, uh, that was expressed in a, in a variety, in a, in a, in a concern. Um, there were, I should say, there were some concerns with what we're proposing for that station. There were concerns about a loss of parking, um, some sidewalk narrowing that would be part of the project. And the reason for the sidewalk narrowing is because with the curb-running configuration for the BRT, your typical parking lane is not as wide as a travel lane. So to get the extra right-of-way needed to make it wi- uh, wide enough for a bus lane, we would need to take a foot or two of sidewalk on each side of Olive for most of Olive. And in addition to that, the letter expressed desire for a more direct connection to the Disney Studios and St. Joseph Medical Center over near Olive and Alameda. And so they proposed a slight reroute, which we'll talk about. There were, um, the, the city expressed a desire for us to be consistent with city plans as well as brought up issues related to the enforcement of bus lanes. So subsequent to the draft EIR comment period, in our ongoing coordination with the city, the city also requested Metro to study an option for bus lanes that would actually convert a travel lane into a dedicated bus lane rather than the parking lane, primarily to avoid the required narrowing of the sidewalks and also to avoid the, uh, the effect on the parking lanes. So speaking a little bit about the Olive Avenue Bridge Stop, the original proposal in the draft EIR, um, showed a, uh, it contained a, a stop directly on the top of the bridge. There'd be a station serving each direction of travel right there at the top of the bridge adjacent to the elevator on the north side. And, um, it would include not only ADA-compliant infrastructure, which would be just a series of bull bouts to allow for an ADA-compliant station platform in each direction, but also a signalized crosswalk to allow people on the, uh, south side of the bridge, heading in the eastbound direction, to then cross the bridge to get to the north side where the elevator is. And then from there, they could go down and access the Burbank Downtown Metrolink Station. So the city did express some concerns with the feasibility of that station, namely as it related to the signalized crosswalk and whether, uh, given the bridge's age and the way it was designed, the bridge could even accommodate the, uh, the infrastructure needed for that signalized crosswalk. However, the crosswalk is an essential component of the stop. Are, were we to stop on top of the bridge, namely to prevent jaywalkers, um, from crossing the bridge? And so, you know, even if we were to say construct an elevator on the south side to allow people to go underneath the bridge and access the Metrolink Station that way, there would still be a concern with jaywalking that would not be addressed without the signalized, uh, crosswalk. So the city in their letter also did propose that to, to maybe, um, deal with some of these concerns. We consider widening the bridge. The problem is that that just simply is not within our budget. It would be cost prohibitive to do so. So what we're proposing is to actually relocate our initial plan to stop on top of the bridge and actually move it over to Lake Street just west of where the bridge starts. Now, this was a concept that we looked at earlier in the, uh, planning process and had discussions with the city about. Now, um, this stop at Lake would still be within a reasonable distance for pedestrians to make their way over to the Metrolink Station. And one of the things that we would propose to do in conjunction with this stop is a, a series of potential lighting improvements, wayfinding signage to better, to have a better, more pleasant connection between the two. And we also want to emphasize that if and when the city does ultimately widen this bridge, we are amenable to relocating this stop back up to the top of the bridge where we had originally proposed it, when at that time, we would better be able to, um, install the infrastructure needed to make this a, a good station. So this could be considered, this lake station could be considered somewhat of an interim stop. So we, we also wanted to discuss a little bit the parking analysis that we did for this project. We did do a parking utilization study that predated COVID where we went out and we inventoried and surveyed the, the parking supply and occupancy rates for curb parking along Olive for each segment of the project. And then we also looked at side streets, um, side blocks within three hundred feet of Olive to see what the, uh, alternative parking supplies could be. And we also looked at, to the extent we could, um, off-street parking lots and structures. And so if you look at this chart here, you'll see the ma- the maximum occupancy rates observed based on the different times of day that we looked at. Um, the, the highest rates observed, observed are really at the two ends of the segment, both over by the media district where it was about eighty percent and then over in the downtown area where it was about ninety percent. And so, based on what we looked at, what we found in the alternative parking supplies that we, uh, that we, that we looked at, um, we do think that there is sufficient parking between areas adjacent to Olive, which are primarily within three hundred feet, um, commercial, institutional, multifamily-type uses, that between those, of those, uh, uh, parking areas as well as off-street structures, that there would be sufficient parking supply for this area and for this, um, for this project. So that said, we do understand that a loss of parking is, is something that is a concern to a number of people in Burbank. And so as I mentioned earlier, one of the things the city asked us to look at subsequent to the draft EIR was a travel lane conversion o- option for a stretch of Olive, stretching basically from Buena Vista Street up to Glen Oaks. And again, the idea here would be to preserve the parking, eliminate the need for this limited sidewalk narrowing and, uh, instead focus on the travel lane conversion. So we did look at that. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Um, there would be an effect on congestion as we expected. That would mostly affect a few hours in the PM peak. So we did do a high-level traffic analysis showing what the congestion effects would be at a number of the key intersections. Now, keep in mind, this was done outside of the EIR because level of service, which is the primary metric for looking at congestion in intersections, is, uh, no longer a, a sequometric. Um, it's, it's vehicle miles traveled now. So we did do a separate traffic and parking analysis outside of the draft EIR. So just in looking at this chart, you'll see that center column, it shows the draft EIR proposed. That's basically the curb-running, um, bus lane, taking the parking lane. And the reason why we showed that is because the LOS numbers here are essentially the same as the existing conditions. Since we would not be taking a travel lane, there would be a minimal effect on congestion. And compare that to the, the lane, the, uh, column on the right-hand side, which would show what the travel lane reduction effects would be at some of these key intersections. So starting at Olive and Buena Vista and then working our way down the chart towards Olive and Lake, um, you can see where, again, it's generally in the PM period where you do see a degradation in LOS, typically from a D or an E down to, um, an F. So this is what the concept of a side-running option would look like on Olive. You see the red dedicated bus lanes there. They would be occupying what are currently the outside travel lanes. And then next to that are the preserved parking lanes. And then compare that to the proposed project that was in the draft EIR and is, uh, the official recommendation as of now. Uh, going forward, you'll see here the curb-running concept for Olive where basically the bus lanes would be in the curb. Um, the two travel lanes would be preserved. And it's also important to note that at intersections, vehicles would be able to get into the bus lanes to make right turns. So then moving on to, uh, another, um, set, another issue that the city expressed to us and then we discussed with them was a proposed reroute of the BRT over at Alameda and Buena Vista. We are agreeing to this reroute. The idea here is to better serve or to more directly serve the, the, the Disney Studios, the Medical Center, as well as some other health ser- health services in the area. And the way we would do that, as I'll show you in the next slide with a, a little, um, route map we have, is to consolidate the two planned stations we have, um, right in this immediate area into one stop at Alameda and Naomi. So the current proposal does show a stop at Olive and Alameda, as well as one at Olive and Buena Vista. Both of these proposed stops are extremely close. Both are about a third of a mile from this new proposed single stop at, um, Alameda and Naomi. We've already taken a, a look at this and how the bus lanes could work and how the station can work. And we do see a good opportunity for platforms at that one intersection, which is just a couple of blocks west of Buena Vista. In addition to that, we want to note that the, what had previously been noted as an optional station in the draft EIR at Olive, Verdugo, Sparks, we are also based on input from the city as well as from the public, making that a proposed station. So then, this is what the refined proposed project would look like in Burbank. You see the reroute there at Alameda, uh, as well as the new consolidated stop over, uh, at Alameda and Naomi. There would be a total of five stations, um, along Olive there. One at Hollywood Way, one at Alameda and Naomi, one at Verdugo, and then the new one at Lake that was relocated from the top of the bridge. And then we would have one downtown at San Fernando. Um, the way the route would overall work coming in from North Hollywood, it would come in on the freeway on the SR one thirty-four, get off at Pass. Uh, after a little short jog on Riverside, it would then connect with Olive and would, of course, as I mentioned earlier, operate in a curb-running type configuration along Olive, all the way up to Glen Oaks. Another minor change to note from what was shown in the draft EIR, we had previously proposed curb-running bus lanes for a short segment on Glen Oaks, turning from Olive. And after working with the city on this, it was determined that this would be better for a mixed-traffic section without bus lanes for just a short section between, um, Olive and Providencia. And one of the reasons that I think this works just fine is because the buses already have to transition anyway into a median-running configuration, which is what they will be for the vast majority of Glen Oaks, um, as, as we proposed it. So we also wanted to touch briefly on consistency with the So we also wanted to touch briefly on consistency with the city plans. We've looked at the city's various plans. We just wanted to highlight a few notes. We do believe we are in compliance with the city's general plan, which notes in multiple areas the need for high-quality, reliable transit that connects to key destinations within Burbank. And even it references the need for regional bus services and B R Ts that link Burbank's various activity centers. Same with the complete streets plan, which was, of course, approved just last year. It in fact designates Olive, Glen Oaks, and Alameda as transit priority streets. The project overlaps with focus areas that were identified in the complete streets plan that address mobility gaps, disadvantaged communities. And in addition to that, the complete streets plan recommends that that all-day side-running bus lanes be considered within Burbank. We wanted to touch briefly on enforcement and security. As for the first point you see here, this is something that comes up periodically when we do our public outreach, and we want to emphasize that emergency vehicles will be able to use these bus lanes. It's not going to be like, say, the orange line a little bit further east, where you have this sort of grade separated or cordoned off right-of-way that only the buses can access. This will be on the street. It needs to work within Burbank streets and with everything else that's going on on the street. And vehicles, emergency vehicles, we will be able to get right into those lanes and take advantage of them. We also want to emphasize that as it relates to enforcing the bus lanes and keeping vehicles out of them, again, not talking so much about right turns where vehicles can share them, but sort of in these mid-block areas, we as an agency are continuing to look in the best ways to do that. For example, mounting our buses with cameras that could be used to enforce violations is something that would require approval at the state level, something we're looking into. But in addition to that, we wanted to emphasize that as it relates to enforcement, we do plan on partnering with the city on how best to do that. But we also want to note that we don't plan to, we don't plan to leave the city on the hook financially for the cost of enforcing those lanes. That is something that we intend to incur. It's just a matter of working with the city on how best to enforce them. So then concluding with next steps, our next big meeting is actually just in a couple of days. It's a corridor-wide community meeting in which we're planning to present the recommended proposed project for board adoption and highlight any refinements compared to what was in the draft E I R. So a lot of the information that you've received tonight will be in that presentation. And then from there, our next step is to go to our board in May to ask them to approve the proposed project, at which point, if they do, we will work on a final E I R, and hopefully that will be certified in summer. That's our next step beyond that. And we also want to note that throughout the rest of the environmental process and then beyond, once we get into preliminary engineering, we will continue to work with the city on design refinements. It's important to keep in mind, things you see here are not set in stone from a block-by-block standpoint, so we can continue to work with the city on that. So that concludes my presentation. Be happy to take any questions you might have, especially as it relates to the two potential options for either curb-running between Buena Vista and Alameda and the side-running concept. As I mentioned, the curb-running is still officially our proposed project. However, if this council feels that a side-running configuration would be the more preferred choice, we can certainly update that in our, as part of our proposed project recommendation. So again, thank you, thank you for your time.
Council members, anybody have comments, questions? Going once, Sharon, please, Councilmember Springer. Mike?
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 Thank you, Mr. Hartwell, for your presentation. I might have a question. Do you have a slide of Naomi and Olive proposed station? Can we see it? I don't know if it didn't advance or...
Yeah, that's a very good question. The answer is, we have just a dot on a map. We do not have like a conceptual layout of the way the stations we look. I think this was such a late-stage change since it came after the E I R. We haven't drawn it up yet. That will be our next step, and then we can coordinate with the city to kind of work through exactly what that could look like.
Okay, thank you. And another question about curb-running versus side-running. Was side-running the example where there were significant impacts to LOS?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the travel lane conversion option.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other council member? Vice, Nick Schultz, please, Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Hartwell, thank you for your presentation. It answered most of my questions, but I did have two. First of all, with regards to the anticipated parking reduction on Olive, one concern that I have had in speaking with my constituents are those businesses that are on Olive. And so my question's a fairly open one, but I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit about any outreach that Metro has done to this date through those businesses to field their concerns and incorporate those in the design plans.
Sure, yeah. So I mean, I can speak on a high level, then I would actually like to defer to Tito Corona, who's on the line as well. He's in our community relations department and is directly responsible for a lot of that outreach. We've held a number of of community meetings at various steps of the way, dating back to the alternatives analysis. And then for public scoping, we came out to Burbank again, and then, of course, our virtual public hearings. It's a corridor-wide. We do mailouts to businesses and residents along the entire corridor. And so those are, that's just sort of a high-level explanation. I'd like to hear what Tito could contribute to that, too.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Particularly for the environmental process, because it's such a technical and legal aspect, we do provide notification along the corridor within a certain radius along the proposed corridor. So notification was done through our canvassing services, and it was, it's provided to all the constituents that are within, I think about 500 feet or 500, 1,000 feet within the alignment. So it would be all the forward-facing businesses along that area, in addition to all our stakeholders that we have, that we that we share our information with. Our database keeps growing. Again, we are, we're always, we always ask our partners in the cities that we are working with to to share our notifications. And unfortunately, right now with how things are in a virtual environment where we're basically isolated to this little screen right here, the the one-on-one engagement has been a little bit more challenging. Doesn't mean that we're that we're unable to communicate with folks. You know, we are, our community, we're available through email, through phone lines, to call us, just like our Zoom meeting for this Thursday. You know, you can, we have a Q R code. All you have to do is put your phone up to the Q R code and scan it, and you'll be able to join up to the Zoom meeting. We have a phone number for those of you who are not able to join via Zoom to call in. It's an eight seven seven number and with an access code to to join in and also participate. So we we provide various avenues, and, you know, we're doing like everyone else, we're doing the best possible during this in certain time. But hopefully, as we get closer to the previous norm, we will incur, we'll engage further with these businesses as we move forward and continue this dialogue about the perceived impacts on whether, you know, the side-running or the curb-running would be better received along Olive Avenue.
Thank you very much. And my final question is, when we were looking at the slide that talked about enforcement and some of those ideas, I saw a note there that at least one of the proposals would require a state legislative fix. I was wondering if you could expand a little bit more on that and what specifically would need to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah. So the the issue is that we don't actually have the authority to equip our buses with cameras that could then issue citations through Metro. That's something that has to be approved at the state level, either for individual transit agencies or statewide. I believe there's a bill, I think it's A B nine seventeen, if I'm not mistaken, that's going in right now, that is attempting to look at that, I believe, on a statewide level. Up to now, it's sort of been a case-by-case basis for individual transit agencies. I believe San Francisco Muni was given that authority. And so that's, that's sort of what we're trying to do in that sense. Now, as it relates to moving violations, that's a little bit more tricky. That really is more of like a law enforcement type of responsibility.
And Scott, if I can also step in, I think I do have a, an assembly bill, A B nine seventeen is one of the bills that creates an automated bus and bus stop enforcement program for transit operators statewide, so that'll allow our buses to have cameras and to capture violations and to be enforced in that matter. So that's, that's the bill summary that I have available on me right now. It's again, A B nine seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Constantine? And then Vice Mayor? Go ahead, Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate this report. You know, I was on Transportation Commission for many, many years, and we were round and around on what was best and which lane and how many spaces and where to go. And, you know, this is, this is where we're at. This is the best option that we saw at that time. And I, you know, looking back on it, re-reviewing it, I'm still in favor of this proposal. I'm still worried that, you know, we're not going to get that Olive Bridge, the elevator on both sides. I mean, that's like, that's going to be super dangerous if people are trying to cross the peak of that. I don't know, you know, when you're coming over that bridge, man, it's, it's wide, you can't see the other side. So someone's trying to cross the street at the top there. That just worries me. I'm very worried about that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your report. Yeah, my concerns are the stations that are being proposed. Lake and Olive, that just doesn't, that just doesn't sit well with me. And then one up at the, on top of the bridge, obviously, like has already been mentioned, the, it's dangerous if you want to cross the street. You want to propose, propose a stop signal up there for pedestrians to cross. I just see too many problems moving forward. And I know, I understand change is hard, because we've been this way for many years in Burbank. So you'll get some pushback. But we also have to move forward and get some change out of it. What do we end up with? You know, obviously, the businesses are very resistant to be, to give up their parking in front of their, in front of the businesses. We've heard that over and over, all five council members and staff, over the years So, Scott, what do you feel is, what is going to go to the board, Metro Board?
Yeah, so as of now, our official staff recommendation is going to be the curb-running configuration that would basically put the bus lanes in the curb parking lanes. But however, we did show you that other option, and we are, we are amenable to switching that out and going with the side option based on your feedback here this evening. We could do either one.
Okay, you showed us that the diagram about available parking spots. So there is plenty that, as far as your survey showed?
Yeah, based on our, yeah, based on what we discovered, yes, because there's, there's an occupancy rate, which allows us to sort of quantify the number of parking spaces that are being, that for which there's a demand during a peak period. And then we can do the same for the the adjacent side parking within 300 feet, quantify the number of spaces that should be available as well based on a similar demand, and then, and then kind of compare to see what's lost on Olive versus what's available at peak times on these side streets. And then that's not even considering off-street lots and structures as well.
And what do you anticipate being a time, what's the timeline for this, once it gets approved in how many years down the road?
Yeah, so we expect, our Measure M opening year is 2024, so we're going to do everything we can to to make that opening year. We should be done with the environmental this summer and get into preliminary engineering. And so we'll then work on design and then start construction, hopefully around 2020, 2022, 2023, somewhere in there. That's, that's our goal.
And time for construction will be several years?
It depends. I think it depends on which segment we're talking about and what's involved and how it's phased. But yeah, overall, the span might take a couple of years when you're talking about the different elements, whether it's implementing the bus lanes, transit signal priority, constructing stations, they're all kind of their own, have their own phases.
So already, you already mentioned in your report the fact that the station up on top of the bridge is just too cost prohibitive, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's more, yeah, I mean, it's more challenging than than simply the cost. I think the cost prohibitive aspect would be if we, if we needed to widen the bridge to accommodate the infrastructure. But based on our conversations with the city, installing a station there as it would be needed to be done based on the existing configuration of the bridge would be ill-advised or infeasible.
Okay. All right, thank you, Scott.
Go ahead, Councilmember Springer.
So when you send out notices, like for example, the Zoom on April 1, do you, do our small businesses, do our businesses on Olive, have they received notification of that?
I'll let Tito speak to that. Tito, if you would.
If they've been, if they're part of our database meeting, they've been part of the the previous meetings, they they would be receiving them electronically. For this meeting on Thursday, again, it's, the notification method was all pretty much electronic with the only a couple exceptions of paper notification right now. It hasn't been too well-received. People are still not willing to 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 receive physical notifications. So it's only for those who are part of our distribution list. And again, we always ask our partners to share the electronic notification for these meetings as well.
Okay, so if we feel like anybody's falling through the cracks, we can, they can contact us, we can contact you, and they can be on the notification list?
Yes.
Right? Okay, and I, and I too have a question about the Olive and MetroLink station. You noted a proposed potential station at Lake. So you proposed that people even coming from like the Burbank Hills or the Glen Oak side would just stay on and get off at Lake and then walk back to the MetroLink? Is that what you have in mind?
Yeah, I mean, that would be one option. The other would be to get off at the San Fernando stop and walk up on the bridge and take the the elevator down. That would be the other alternative. But yes, Lake would be the closest B R T stop.
Right, okay. So the stop is proposed at San Fernando, is that right? So what about if, what about improvements? I mean, the sidewalk is about this narrow and the rail is very low. So would this include improvements to that? So it's a more pleasant walk to get up there to the elevator or on the other side to get to the ramp?
Well, I think had we stopped at the, if we were proposing a stop at the top of the bridge, the answer would be yes. We would essentially need to raise the railings, not just around our station where people are waiting, but across the entire bridge. I don't think that's something that we could afford to fund without the bridge stop. I think we would focus on that Lake stop and then making improvements between the Lake stop and the MetroLink station. As I mentioned, we would look at lighting improvements to light the way, wayfinding signage, things like that for a better connection from Lake.
And so, of course, you're working with the city and any potential improvements to the Olive Bridge. I know for, for a few years, I've heard, you know, it's an old bridge, it's 50 years old. There are plans to eventually redo it, renovate it, maybe with, I think, Measure R money. So has that come up?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've talked about it. I mean, as we understand it, that is certainly the city's desire to widen it in some way. I think it's still to be determined whether it could be widened or would even need to be demolished and rebuilt, just based on the way it's sort of constructed. Those are the types of details that we certainly don't have at that, at this point. So we know this is something that could be down the line 10, 15, 20 years, whenever the city would, would, would try to work to do that. I mean, Metro, as I understand it, does not have, have that in its project list to do that. But that, that raises another issue. Were we to install infrastructure on the bridge related to a, an Olive Avenue or a stop right on the top of the bridge? You know, the question then becomes, will this infrastructure become obsolete if the bridge is then widened a few years after that? So I mean, that was a consideration as well.
Okay, just, I think that if, with the station at San Fernando and Lake, the rail and the sidewalk, I just suggest that they be widened and heightened. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. If you guys are done, I will weigh in now. Okay, I see Mr. Krisky is on the Zoom meeting. If I can get you to turn on your camera, sir, I got to ask you a question. Mr. Krisky?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks for joining us. This was a heavily debated topic with the Transportation Commission. Were they favorable to this project or not favorable? And if they weren't, why?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, David Krisky with the Canadian Development Department. The Transportation Commission did weigh in on this project, and they did have concerns with the project. Their ultimate recommendation was that they supported the project, but only if the project was modeled. was modified in the way that you, as the City Council, presented to Metro as part of your comment letter. And so that meant building a proper station on the Olive Overpass. It meant taking serious consideration of how we deal with the parking effects along Olive Avenue. There was significant concern about that. And potentially, you know, recognizing that there probably needs to be a trade-off looked at between the bus lane and mixed flow traffic because, as Mr. Hartwell said, the only way to implement bus lanes on the center part of Olive is that either to remove all the parking or remove a travel lane. And that was of concern to the council as part of their comment letter, and it was of concern to the Transportation Commission. So they, they recommended a, a support for the project, but only, you know, and essentially on Burbank's terms with the, with the, with the item Burbank's concern addressed that were commented in the, in the comment letter.
Great, thank you for, for the update, Mr. Krisky. Thank, because I thought, I believed I, I read a memo when that meeting was over about this project. If I had a vote on this project today, I would vote no. And the reason why I would vote no is because I think Burbank is getting short-changed. You're, you're basically, I'm just going to shoot from the hip. You're screwing up Olive, you're taking away parking, you're not even giving us a decent bus stop on the bridge that we know that's where people are going to want to jump to regional transportation, that you told us that this is going to bring transportation for MetroLink. You've got buses, trains, we've got bike path. You guys got to revisit that. Because the way I see this right now is we're losing parking, we're losing curb lane, and you just said it, that you're expecting in your study to these businesses on Olive that are losing parking, that parking is going to flow into the residents. And we have another hot item later on this evening that is basically taking cars off Olive for a business and putting them into a neighborhood. And now we're going to put a bus lane that is really only passing through Burbank. Because that's what it is. It's, it's the connectivity to move it on outside, but you're going to hurt the residents of Burbank because you're taking parking. So at Verdugo and Rees, we're still discussing with, with Mr. Krisky in the future, how we're going to redo that intersection. And you're already talking about putting a bus stop there or a transportation little facility there. All the excess traffic is going to flow into the neighborhood. That's bad. We have St. Finbar. They have evening activities, they've got school there, they've got church there. Where are those people going to park? They're going to go into the neighborhoods. That's not protecting neighborhoods. We got our school district admin offices. Where are they going to park? So everything I've heard, I think Burbank is getting the short change here. I really like you guys to visit that Olive Bridge bus stop to really demonstrate to Burbank that this is a true benefit. Because losing parking and running that bus up and down Olive so it can connect to Glendale and onto Pasadena, I'm scratching my head. How does that benefit the entire city of Burbank for those small businesses losing parking? Or those residents are going to be angry because they can't find a, a place to park in front of their own home because there's really no place to park? So those are my two cents. That's just me as I'm looking at this. And enough with comments. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much, Metro. Council members, thank you. Mr., will the city attorney please report on enclosed session items this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me one second. Thank you. The council met in closed session this evening. One item was labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 957.6. The city negotiator was the Management Services Director. The represented employees associations was Burbank Police Officer Association and Burbank Firefighter Chief Officers Unit. Also, council met in closed session under existing litigation, Government Code Section 54, 956.9D1. And this was the city of Burbank, Atoll versus Barfly, Inc., concerning violation of Burbank Municipal Code and abatement of nuisance. There was a second existing litigation case, but the council was unable to get to that item and it will be rescheduled. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business, except the public hearing. Community members, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment. To participate, please call right now, 818-238-3335. Ms. Jimenez, do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, Mayor, we currently have 10 public comment callers on the line.
Outstanding. Beam them in, Scotty.
Coming through.
Our first caller is Roy Wiegand. Roy, you are live with council.
Good evening, Mr. Wiegand.
Good evening, roll the tape.
Roll the tape.
Hello, Burbankers, and welcome back to the Mike and Roy Show, fully vaccinated and alive from Tin Horn Flats. Just kidding, we've got a lot to talk about.
Cut the clowning, Roy, we got to get right to it. Because we now know that our public comment time is being reduced again. And we used to have five minutes to address our issues to City Council. Then it became three minutes. And now our mayor, Mayor Frudos, we love you, we're friends. But now sometimes you're reducing that to two minutes. Think about the people who are nervous, who've never addressed City Council. They've prepared their comments, timed it to three minutes, and then you say, we're cutting it to two because we have so many speakers. You know, these people who've never done it before don't have the time to do that, and it's just not fair. Please just let us have our three minutes. Remember when City Council meetings went until 3:00 in the morning so that we can all have our say at City Council?
Well, and that's what you, if you're going to run for City Council, get on there. That's what you signed up for. There's going to be some late nights. And please don't encourage City Council members to keep their comments to the public brief, or their comments or replies or thoughts on even agenda items. Keep those brief. There's a real pattern here when we see these reductions in public input. Final orals disappeared a while ago. You know, all these things, they kind of add up over time, and it's a concern to all of us going forward. And you're always a council, everybody in council there, staff, they encourage public involvement. This is not helping.
Yeah, and when our final orals were eliminated, staff says, oh, this is to encourage, you know, more interaction with the community. BS. It took away more of our time to address City Council. Let's talk about videos. Now this issue about restricting our videos is coming up again. I would like either Constantine or Nick, anybody up there, but you new guys, tell us who keeps bringing this up? What staff member keeps saying, oh, we got to do something about videos? There's not a problem with videos. We've been showing them for years. Lots of people have been showing videos. People do a lot of their presentations on videos. I want to know who on staff keeps bringing up this issue? Let's put a restriction on videos. Not cool.
Well, and again, when we shorten all this time of public speaking, we can remind people that not everybody's as smooth as you and I would speak. They get caught up, they get nervous. So again, that needs to be restored. It would be great to get back to five minutes, like it used to be. People can come and say their piece, so.
Yeah, so that's what we're asking you, our City Council members. You represent residents. Listen to us and give us our proper comment time that we need to get our issues out and, and then don't restrict our videos. Our videos are great, we're hilarious.
We are the media capital of the world, I think.
And we tell the truth, yes. Sometimes the truth hurts. We'll see you next time on the Mike and Roy Show.
Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Phil Dojic. Phil, you're live with council.
Welcome, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all well and ready to fix the economy and our city. We need to see better progress of our city and to overtake the economy of the city of Glendale, both in social, cultural, and tourist level. We need to have the Americana bred with the live music, with a spectacular waterfall. I hope that you have launched an initiative to improve the economy, which I said in my previous presentations, what is needed. If you need any advice, project on this, feel free to contact me, I will be proud to help you. In addition, I would like to register a very bad service of the Spectrum Company because of, we, we have a bad internet service in, out for three months, and it is necessary to recall them for bad work. They ask us to pay the full bill for the service even though we do not have internet. It refers to Verdugo and Florence Street area. Also, to register a very bad service of the United States Postal Service North Hollywood Way because of we have bad delivery service. If you send a letter or package with important documents to one night from Washington DC, it takes time to deliver in the same five to six days with existing possibility of letter or package being lost. When we talk about business, we know that for one night, it is six miles, and for Washington DC, it is 2,700 miles. Something is wrong with their business and they need to be also recalled. So far, so good. Best regards. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Peter Pendergast. Peter, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm calling to voice my concern over the Raising Cane restaurant being constructed at the corner of Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive. Raising Cane is known for having drive-through lines that can extend beyond 30 cars at a time and have waiting times in excess of 40 minutes. While there are locations in Burbank that would be able to accommodate that amount of queuing, this location definitely cannot. The rationale for allowing Raising Cane at this location appears to be that a drive-through window already existed. I maintain that the drive-through window was in abandoned use. US Bank and Danny City before them never used the drive-through window. In fact, US Bank converted the drive-through, drive-through lane into a planner box. The window ceased to be a drive-through over a decade ago. Raising Cane professes that they want to be a good neighbor, but they have not reached out to anybody in the community who would be adversely affected by their operations at this location. In fact, they seem to have gone out of their way to avoid reaching out to the public from the beginning. There was no public comment champs, no, no traffic study, no environmental review. This operation will have severe consequences on the health, safety, and livability of the neighborhood that will never be recovered. Even the mitigation suggested by Building and Safety will have profound negative effects on the neighborhood, with various parking restrictions and in extreme cases, closing the intersection between Olive and Orchard. I don't want to close the intersection, but I would rather have that than not being able to get out of my driveway because it's blocked by a line of cars waiting in the drive-through lane. In the February 23rd council meeting, Patrick Prescott said something to the effect that part of Building and Safety's responsibility was to ensure that commercial property did not remain vacant for extended periods. There is plenty of vacant commercial property in Burbank that would be better able to handle the traffic volume that Raising Cane will attract. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Kim Pendergast. Kim, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm calling to express my opposition to the construction of the Raising Cane restaurant at the corner of Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive. Raising Cane restaurants generate drive-through lines that can extend 30 cars at a time, in some cases, stretching for a quarter mile. The location of a drive-through at this already congested intersection in Burbank will result in gridlock that will negatively affect businesses on Olive Avenue and neighborhoods along the side streets, particularly Orchard Drive. Additionally, the placement of a fast food drive-through directly abutting a private residence with no buffer is unprecedented in Burbank. In addition to the traffic problem, neighborhood residents will have to contend with excessive noise, food waste, and parking shortages. I'm distressed that this project was approved by Building and Safety without any traffic or environmental study and without giving the public a chance to comment. Burbank has always put its citizens first. I urge the City Council to pause this project until appropriate impact studies and a full review can be conducted. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Coming through.
Our next speaker is Bill Sologub. Bill, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council for the time and opportunity to speak publicly on this issue. My comment is also related to the construction of Raising Cane's at 1750 West Olive Avenue. The concern I want to bring to you is around the impact of Raising Cane to the surrounding residential area, specifically concerned around where the traffic will queue up for the drive-through as well as the parking lot entrance on Orchard Drive, a residential street. I understand that the previous tenant, the bank, falls under the same C2 zoning as this restaurant, but those two businesses are not similar in their use and consideration needs to be taken to make sure the residential street and neighborhood is not used for commercial use or is impacted otherwise. Raising Cane is a popular high-traffic restaurant with high reliance on their drive-through with no other locations within 25 miles. People will be coming to this location. You've probably seen the In-N-Out line blocking driveways and the right lane of traffic on North First Street, almost always the case. You've seen the Chick-fil-A line of cars blocking the intersections and the right-hand turn lane from Olive to Alameda. I'm sure you've tried to make that turn and instead were blocked by the cars going to the restaurant. This will end up being the same. And just like nothing is done to address those issues, nothing will be done to fix this once the restaurant is allowed to continue its path to open. Please consider these real-life examples in our city and let's find a solution for 1750 West Olive Avenue before construction is allowed to continue further. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Kristen Roberts. Kristen, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and council members, Kristen Roberts, Senior Property Development Manager, Frecklin Cashier with Raising Cane's. Raising Cane's is developing a new restaurant at 1750 West Olive Avenue. And I'd first like to offer our thanks to city staff for their continued cooperation and assistance since we began working on this project in November of 2019. We have indeed been communicating with them about reaching out to the community, and I'd like to quickly outline our efforts to the City Council for your information. This morning, we mailed a letter to all residents within 1,000 feet of our restaurant, addressing concerns such as noise, traffic, and trash. And in that letter, we provided an email address and a website that are both dedicated to the Burbank community. The email address, and I'll say it, then I'll spell it, is Burbank@RaisingCane.com. And anyone, please feel free to contact us directly at that email address. Again, that's Burbank@RaisingCane.com. And then we also have a website that's truly dedicated to the Burbank, excuse me, Burbank community. And that's www.RaisingCane.com/Burbank. We would also like to note that we are in the process of scheduling a virtual meeting to, open to the community where we will receive and address neighborhood comments. We'll share the details of that meeting with the city staff and anyone who contacts us at the Burbank@RaisingCane.com email address. Raising Cane's is committed to, and we truly look forward to a long-term relationship with the city of Burbank. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and we are available to respond to any questions that the City Council may have. And we truly look forward to being a part of the neighborhood. There are other members of our team on this evening, and we look forward to being here if you need us.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tom Tally. Tom, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for your time. My call is ironically right behind the Raising Cane representative, but I'm gonna go ahead anyways. I live on South Orchard Drive and I firmly believe that the building of a very popular and so far up until two seconds ago, a very non-neighborhood-engaging drive-through is a major mistake. Potential for traffic has been approached with a nonchalant, "if this happens, we'll do this," or maybe "if that happens, we'll do that." Zero study or planning has been done to evaluate the project on the neighborhood, let alone the houses directly next door to this project. First there's Starbucks, which is a disaster, then Chick-fil-A, tell me a happy neighbor that's next to that restaurant, and now Raising Cane's? This needs to be looked at much more closely. I think the completion of this project will enter in an endless stream of non-working and last-minute remedies that the city could be chasing for a very, very long time. Please, please, in the sake of this neighborhood, all three of these restaurants are in this neighborhood, look at this project a little closer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call, next caller please.
Our next caller is James Rathbun. James, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm calling to voice my opposition to the Raising Cane's drive-through. A lot has been said about the traffic and the problems it's gonna cause and it'll be worse if you guys go ahead with the bus line down Olive. I can't imagine how bad it's going to be. But one thing that hasn't been addressed is the pollution. Now, an average wait time through a drive-through is three minutes. In those three minutes, an idling car will produce nearly 20 grams pollutants, about the same as driving one and a half miles. If there are 10 cars, then multiply that by 10 with the additional wait time in the drive-through. That's equivalent to driving 15 miles per car in line. If there are 20 cars, you double that. And it's gonna happen all day, every day, 9:00 AM to midnight. The pollution adds up fast. There's limited parking at the site. They've put in the minimum amount that they need to put a restaurant in that lot. So, how many people are gonna get discouraged and just drop somebody off and then cruise around the neighborhood until their food is ready? That's gonna create additional traffic, additional pollution. Right now, the neighborhood is very pedestrian-friendly. It's going to become more dangerous with the increased traffic and the air quality will certainly be worse. Burbank has their, on their website, they have a green page where they have a sustainability action plan to, a plan to make Burbank a cleaner, greener, better place to live. There's a resolution on climate change to reduce greenhouse gases. Tens of million of dollars have already been spent to reduce pollution by the city. There's traffic plans to make it more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly and there's air quality plans. But this project violates every one of those stated goals. It's just an abomination in this neighborhood. There's been no input from the people who will be impacted most by this. Pollution and traffic will increase and why is the city spending millions of dollars to reduce air pollution and then permit a project like Raising Cane's? It seems like a waste of taxpayers' money. And cities across the US are banning drive-throughs. Why not Burbank? Thank you.
Thank you for your call, next caller please.
Our next caller is Tim Murphy. Tim, you're live with council.
Good evening, Mr. Murphy.
Hey, delightful to see the esteemed Mayor and Vice Mayor and the council and thank you for your service and thank you for your time. Sorry to be bothering you tonight, but I have to stand in solidarity with my neighborhood. There's tremendous concern about Raising Cane. There's a lot of points that they want to make and I'm only gonna point to one. Section 2 of the staff report, I would ask you all to read that very carefully. I couldn't disagree more with the staff's point of view that this was an established drive-through window. That bank was there for many, many years. They walked away from the drive-through window. Initially, they closed it and they started to park employee cars there so you couldn't go through. And then eventually, they took it out completely. They took the lane out, they put in a planner and a walkway, a sheltered walkway. It's been gone for anywhere from five to 10 years. Under the law, it's been abandoned and it doesn't exist. Therefore, the only way I can see to make this project legal is to hold a CUP and it should have already been done. I'll leave it at there. There's a lot of other problems. I've talked to two land use lawyers and two planning types and they all agree with me that it's an abandoned use and that staff's point of view on that is tortured, to say the least. I also wanted to point out, a couple of years ago when I was on the council, I was very concerned about Verdugo being shoved into Olive Avenue with the bus plan going through there. I hope you guys will remember that that was a bad idea, all that traffic and the bus lane and Raising Cane. Thanks for your time, appreciate what you do, thanks for your service. Talk to you soon, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next caller please.
Our next caller is Simon Hamel. Simon, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Simon Hamel. Thank you, City Council, for listening to my call tonight and welcome to the new members. This is the first time I think I've called since you were in session. I'm calling for two different issues. One, the bus routes, I think you're going down the right avenue by rejecting the project. It was pretty clear to me by looking at it, it's gonna really, really slow down traffic and the quality of life. And someone just made a good comment earlier talking about cars idling and sitting there while, you know, they're slowed down for any reason. And at least the buses that go by my house are, at all times, at maximum, it seems to be a quarter full. So we're really slowing many, many cars down to not gain a great benefit. And I think this is the kind of thing, and unfortunately, just sometimes with engagement with local government, we're nine people total on the line tonight and there's gonna be more than nine people affected by this and they're gonna notice it later. And it doesn't seem to be the kind of mistake that you can fix easily after the mistake hasn't been made and I would just suggest that many of the people riding the bus will probably not be the ones voting in the next election. The, you know, this is, it also opens the door to even more loss of freedom from the state. As you know, our own representatives have voted, our state representatives have frequently voted to strip the freedom of the people who live in Burbank to make their own laws regarding what goes in Burbank and what happens in Burbank. And I wish that they would demonstrate that we're smart enough to consider all factors and govern ourselves, but they don't. And adding mass transportation will give them an even larger invitation to take even more of your rights away. And the second thing I wanted to talk about was, I'm not sure if it's a rumor or what was going on with that, but I'm not in favor of taking away the ability of constituents to get on the record and present their ideas during public comment. This is the time, their main chance to have a public voice and have it be recorded as part of an official meeting. So if there's not enough time to do it in the meetings, let's open up some of these dark meetings and give the time to the public to speak and bring back the final orals and people may even stay longer to the end of the meeting if they get a chance to rebut or say something about a topic that was spoken about in the meeting. Thanks very much for taking my call and that's all I got and I look forward to your comments.
Thank you for your call, next caller please.
Our next caller is Michael Hastings. Michael, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Michael Hastings, resident of Burbank. It was interesting to hear Tim Murphy call in as well. Yes, we were both on the City Council at the same time and we both were very young when we got into office and the reason that I am calling is that I'd like to comment on some of the comments made by one of the newer council members, Councilmember Constantine Anthony. And his comments were made regarding, very detrimental comments regarding our county supervisor, Catherine Barger. And for the 30-odd years that I've been involved in Burbank, the office of this, not only Mike Antonovich but also Catherine Barger, has been so very generous with the city of Burbank when it comes to public, private, and the charities of Burbank. To make the very derogatory comments about someone who has served our community with such fervor and vigor and with, I mean, the energy that Catherine Barger has, I was disturbed. And I would just ask Constantine or Councilman Anthony to please measure his words because you may be speaking for yourself, but when you're in public office, quite often, you are speaking on behalf of the people that you represent. And I would have to say for me personally, and I can only speak for myself, you don't speak for me, because that woman and her office, Anna, her Chief of Staff, go so far out of their way and the people of Burbank should look into it and see all the good that she has done for our community. So thank you for the time and again, Councilman, it's not too late to learn to please measure your words and remember who you represent. You represent all of us. Thank you very much, appreciate the time. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your call, next caller please.
Our next caller is Deborah Bind. Deborah, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I wanted to call to express my concern regarding the project, I can't remember the name of it, the little restaurant that they're putting in with the drive-through. I don't know if you guys have a map of it, but it shows that Parrish is a light and then the next light would be the six-way intersection that's at Sparks. So their drive-through would be coming out on Olive at a point between these two lights. Olive backs up a great deal when it's regular business, when everything's flowing normally. And you can sit there for three cycles of the light before you even get through. This is gonna make it so much worse. And I'm also wondering how it got passed through the planner and if you guys would actually look into it and see who approved it and why they approved it. Because a bank is far different than a restaurant that's gonna have a long line and like past callers have mentioned, they eventually stopped even using that as a drive-through. But I'm very concerned about the traffic impact it will have. Let me see if there was anything else. Oh, it would be nice if there was some type of posting that's presented when there's a project that's in the planning stage so people are aware of it. Because millers go out, like they noted today, that they, today, they sent out 1,000 millers to the neighborhood. Well, it's kind of late for that to be going out. Shouldn't that be going out in the beginning when it's at the planning stages so people can have their input and not have it so far down the line that it's harder to stop? And the outreach that Burbank has with the community, the responses are very few, which makes me feel like the outreach is not appropriate when it comes to many of the things, the different surveys that are put out or just general information on these projects that are coming through. Most people have no idea about it and I think that really needs to be fixed and that's why a lot of the citizens feel like we're not listened to because we find out things so late in the game. I appreciate you listening to my concerns and I hope you really think about the structure of the layout, where the lights are, how the traffic will back up. I am so against this, not against the restaurant itself, just against having a drive-through with that location.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for your call. Next caller please.
Our next caller is Jenny Barnett. Jenny, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. People that are having a problem with this Raising Cane Restaurant just needs to come to Hollywood Way between Mangolia and Clark. Saturday and Sunday mornings, the traffic has gotten just to be exorbitant. I leave around noon to have a medical procedure and I can't get out on the Clark because it's backed up two blocks. We can't get out to Mangolia because it's backed up almost to Verdugo. People are making U-turns coming the other way, even right behind the sign that says they can't. Someone's going to get hurt because the cross streets at Clark and Mangolia are used by families and people walking their pets. I've seen no police out there, no motor cops, nobody taking care of anything. People won't let anybody in or out. They park in the, they park in the intersection and it's causing a lot of trouble, especially since this week, we just had someone that tried to do a pickup by driving through the front doors of Porto's. So this really needs to be addressed. Maybe we need to not allow parking on that part of Hollywood Way on Saturdays and Sundays to keep that traffic down. But if someone doesn't get hurt soon, it will happen. It needs to be addressed now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call, next caller please.
Coming through.
Our next caller is Scott Clark. Scott, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and good evening to the City Council. Thank you for your time. There's a couple of things I'd like to address, I'll make it quick. First was that call from the PR Department of Raising Cane's. This project's been ongoing now for four or five months. The building is already half-complete or not completed, but it's still in the building stage. Now they want to talk? I can't, I'm just speaking for myself, but I'm probably speaking for the rest of the neighborhood saying, "We're not interested. They've waited too long, now they want to talk." Enough about that. Another concern is, you're already well aware that we're concerned about noise, traffic, and trash. But there was another observation I noticed today that you just might want to take into consideration, that's the access to fire department, the police department. A lot of the people on this street have lived here for more than 20 years. There's about four or five of us families left that have lived here for more than 30 and we're not getting any younger. My neighbor across the street is in 80s and he's in failing health. The fire department and a paramedic were here today and took him to the hospital. Now, these are large vehicles, they take up a lot of room. If there's a line going into a restaurant, how are these people supposed, how are fire department or the police department supposed to get through and do whatever they have to do with a line of cars going up the street? So I think this is something you might want to take into consideration and I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you for your call, next caller please. Next caller, please.
It'll just be one moment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Juan Guillen. Juan, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. It's an embarrassment that we're the media city capital of the world, and we can't square away these phone lines to where callers that want to listen in to prior speakers can hear what others are saying. It's bad enough that we reduce public comments to three minutes, and we want people to not go over their time limits, but I could be repeating something someone else had said previously. But I can't hear them because I was asked to lower my volume, or turn off my YouTube for the feedback, so I can't hear what others say, and so perhaps I'm repeating what someone else has said three times, four times over. On another matter, final orals. The meeting on the 16th, where Councilmember Anthony wanted to vote on an item he had not previously voted on, is a perfect example of the importance of final orals and being able to bring back an item in the same council meeting it was presented. So, it doesn't have to come back two or three weeks later. He was allowed to vote in the manner in which he wanted, and the decision moved forward without any further delays. Many moons ago, before this majority council ruined last orals and reduced public comments, a person at home watching the meeting could have said, "Wow, they have that information wrong. Let me race down to city council and provide some information they might not be aware of." And in that same meeting, a council member could have made a motion to bring back that item for a revote. You eliminated final orals, you reduced public comment, and now the public doesn't have an opportunity to bring items back as a council member did a few weeks ago. Stop telling me you want greater participation. Show me.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sherri Small. Sherri, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Sherri Small. I'm a lifetime Burbank resident and former resident of the Rancho on South Orchard Drive for many, many years before we moved to Magnolia Park. I still have many friends that live on South Orchard Drive, and I'm concerned for them at this point because of an experience I had this weekend with Porto's. Now, everybody knows that Porto's is very popular and has very long lines along Hollywood Way. Well, I was coming south on Hollywood Way, and I saw the line. And I go to turn left on Clark to come home. Somebody decided to pop out of the line, because I guess the wait was going to be too long, almost hit me. As I was sitting at the intersection, I also noticed that people were not allowing other cars that wanted to access the gas station on the corner of Clark and Hollywood Way to enter, because the line had blocked both of the driveways. Okay, I proceed down Clark, and the line snakes down Clark to the stop sign that is right by Roosevelt, Roosevelt, I mean, excuse me, Clark and Cordova. Another person wanted to get out of line by doing a U-turn, almost right into the side of my car. I stopped just in time, let the person go. Then I proceeded through the stop sign and took a look up Clark, excuse me, up Cordova. The line stretched as far as I could see. And we all know that there's many, many homes on that street, and driveways were being blocked. The same thing is going to happen over with the Raising Cane along Orchard. And if people are going to be recalcitrant in letting people actually even get into their driveways, or even if they don't use their driveways just parking in front of their house, you know, there could be, there could be some conflicts, and there's always a chance of a bit of road rage. I'm just concerned, because I had never seen that line at Porto's that long. I had seen it come down Hollywood Way and go onto Clark, but never all the way around. And another thing I'm concerned about is emergency vehicles. Now, if there's a line snaking down Orchard, let's say, and there's parked cars also, I don't know if there's enough room for the fire truck or the paramedics to get down there. You know, so I think that's a big concern also. I appreciate you taking my call and giving it some consideration. It was nice to hear former Councilman Murphy. He lives very close to where I used to live, and a shout-out to him. And thank you so much, and have a pleasant week. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
All right, Mayor, so I'm showing that we do not have any more callers on the line.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Based on your notification that no more community members, then I will close the public comment period. And now is the time for a brief response from city council members, city manager, or the city attorney. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it quick. To Michael Hastings, who called in, you know, I've been very critical of some of the things that Catherine Barker has put forward, but I never attacked her personally. I always try to stick to the issues. If I haven't done so, I really do apologize. I don't mean to attack anybody on their own personal, you know, lifestyle, or who they are, or the choices they make in their own lives. I try, try very hard, stick to the issues, tackle the issue at hand, be critical on a vote, and never make it personal. I really try to do that. So, I apologize if I crossed any line. Please forgive. To the Mike and Roy Show, I like the videos, but I have to say, I'm going to side with the mayor on that one night in question where we did reduce public comment. That night, there was a public hearing, and that public hearing must have been weighed and measured based on evidence only. So, in fact, public comment should not have had any influence on the council member's decisions. So, to reduce that amount of time on the comments, I think at that specific night, I'm going to side with the mayor. I think, you know, public participation is very crucial, but that was a very specific night with special circumstances. So, please, I would ask that you give the mayor a pass on that one. It was a very long night, and it was a very difficult hearing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody who took the time to call in tonight. To the many, many callers who called about Raising Cane, I'll reserve any commentary I have on your comment for that agenda item. But I did want to close, Mr. Mayor, with regards to Mr. Wiegand, Mr. Hamel, and Mr. Guillen, who are all talking about public comment. There was a mention brought up about video submissions. I just wanted to note for the public, while it may have changed, I believe on April 13th, we're actually going to be considering a digital media policy to facilitate the submission and use of videos. So, I would just encourage you to stay tuned for that agenda item, and of course, I'm happy to talk to you offline as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
I'd like to thank everybody for calling in, and I too will reserve my comments for the Raising Cane agenda item. And I have always supported public comment, and it was, and I support videos too, so I also look forward to April 13th. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I just want to thank everybody for calling in and sharing their concerns with us. I especially want to thank former Councilmember Murphy for calling in and weighing in, and also former Mayor Michael Hastings. And I have to agree with you, Mr. Mayor Hastings. I too have worked with Supervisor Barker, and I worked with Supervisor Antonovich before he retired, and they have been very good to Burbank. So, thank you for making those comments about them, because I agree 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank everybody and move the council meeting forward. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate your input to public comment, and let's continue with the meeting. Consent calendar? The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Ms. Jimenez, may I trouble you to please read the consent calendar this evening?
Yes, Mayor. We have item number one, consideration and adoption of an uncodified urgency ordinance extending the local commercial eviction moratorium. Approve the housing authority minutes of the joint meeting of December 8th and December 15th, 2020, and February 23rd, 2021. Authorize the general manager of Burbank Water and Power to enter into an agreement between the City of Burbank and Metropolitan Water District of Southern California for a modified service connection, B-05 and B-05A. Item number four is authorize the general manager of Burbank Water and Power to enter into an amendment, number one, to the cost-sharing agreement between the City of Burbank and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, Crescenta Valley Water District, and cities of Glendale and San Fernando for allocation of cost of water master services and water master legal services for the upper Los Angeles River area groundwater basins. Item number five is adoption of a resolution approving a funding agreement between the City of Burbank and the Child Care Resource Center, and authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to execute the agreement. Item number six, approval of a three-year agreement for Burbank Bus Transit Operations and Maintenance Services with MV Transportation, Inc. Item number seven, adoption of an uncodified ordinance to temporarily cap service fees charged by third-party food delivery services. And the final item is item number eight, introduction of an ordinance amending the City of Burbank Municipal Code Section 2-1-413, Police Commission Regarding the Size, Member Composition, and Meeting Frequency of the Police Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to move the consent calendar? Councilmember Schultz, if we have a second? Council, Councilmember Anthony? If the council doesn't want to have a question or pull an item, then we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Councilmember Springer, do you have a question?
In favor of all, number seven.
Okay, let's wait till you, let's wait till your vote, and then you can, you can pull that one out when she calls you during the roll. Ms. Jimenez, I don't see any, oh, wait, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number six.
Is it for a question or a discussion, Vice Mayor?
Discussion.
Then we have to go to the end of the meeting, then?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to pull item number six, the approval of a three-year agreement for the Burbank Bus Transit Operations and Maintenance Service with MV Transportation, Inc., and that'll go to the end of the meeting for a discussion. I ask you to call for the roll, please.
Sure. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, to all.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
No to seven, to the others.
Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
And Mayor Frutos?
Yes, but no on seven and no on eight.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing of the Burbank Housing Authority to consider the Public Housing Agency's annual plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, and proposed amendments to the Housing Authority Administration Plan. If you wish to comment on this item, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment period begins. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing, council members? Vice Mayor, I don't see you on the camera. Vice Mayor? Okay, no, no conflict? Okay. Ms. Jimenez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have, Mayor.
Councilmembers, just by a nod, do you have the complete file of exhibits, correspondences, and other documents? Just by a nod? I see five nods. Thank you. Are there any written communications on this matter?
Yes, Mayor. Two correspondences were received and distributed to the city council.
Councilmembers, you have those two emails, just by a nod, yes? Thank you. Councilman Springer? Thank you. Will the representative of the Burbank Housing Authority please introduce herself and summarize the item for us?
Good evening, Housing Authority Board members. Tonight, we have a pre-recorded presentation for you, and my name is Tricia Smith. I'm a housing specialist. Good evening, Housing Authority Chairperson and members of the Housing Authority Board. My name is Tricia Smith, housing specialist, and I'm before you this evening to present required documents that the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development requires to be submitted by a housing authority for the administration of the Section 8 program. First, a brief overview of the Housing Authority. The mission of the Burbank Housing Authority is working together for a safe, beautiful, and thriving community. The goals and objectives outlined in these documents continue to meet the requirements of the Section 8 program tailored to the Burbank community within the funding allocation provided each year, including expanding the supply of assisted housing, maintaining the quality of assisted housing, promoting self-sufficiency of families and individuals, increasing awareness of housing choices, and working with federal representatives to improve and expand rental and homeownership opportunities for lower-income households. Before going over the details of the HUD-required documents, I'd like to provide a brief update on the status of the Section 8 program. Housing Authority staff continues to maintain the pre-pandemic high level of service to our Section 8 participants and landlords. Staff continues to follow all direction from HUD to ensure that critical functions of the program continue without interruption. These critical functions include issuing vouchers to current program participants who wish to move, immediate processing of all paperwork for continued assistance, expedite processing for portability movers, recalculations for families who have experienced a decrease in income, conducting in-person inspections for vacant units, as well as over the phone, to ensure all participants continue to live in safe and sanitary housing. Post-pandemic, staff will continue to monitor information released by HUD to continue to serve the Burbank community. The work that staff continues to do for the program is reflected in the mission and goals outlined in program documents. The city council housing goals, along with HUD's goals, to provide affordable housing and economic opportunities to the Burbank community, remains unchanged. In order to continue to receive Section 8 program funding, HUD requires housing authorities to submit these documents that outline the mission of the city and housing authority, and the goals for achieving its mission, primarily of serving the city's most needy and vulnerable households in the upcoming year. These documents include the annual plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, which provides a progress report for the first year of the 2020 through 2025 five-year plan, and the administrative plan, which establishes local policies and procedures for administering the Section 8 program. Each document is explained in more detail in the next couple of slides. The due date for these documents is April 17th, 2021. The Section 8 program is only one piece of the city council's larger housing strategy and goals for providing affordable housing in the community. By implementing this federally-funded program and maximizing the utilization of vouchers available, the Housing Authority has taken existing housing units in the community and provided rent subsidies to make those units more affordable for extremely low and very low-income households. In order to continue to receive these funds, the Housing Authority must submit an update to the approved 2020 through 2025 five-year plan that describes the Housing Authority's mission and the goals for achieving its mission during the next five years. In the first year of the five-year plan, the Housing Authority assisted 880 extremely low and very low-income households with no disruption of service. To continue to assist households already on the program, staff applied for and received an additional housing assistance payment allocation through the Federal Cares Act in November of 2020. Housing Authority staff has been monitoring expenses Housing Authority staff has been monitoring expenses on a monthly basis, utilizing available reserve funds, and if necessary, will request additional funds from HUD. HUD also requires housing authorities to submit revisions to the administrative plan if necessary. The administrative plan establishes local policies and procedures for administering the program in compliance with regulations and requirements. The proposed changes this year are clarifying processes and procedures that come up during the day-to-day implementation of the Section 8 program, of which are summarized in your materials. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, one additional chapter is proposed to be included that memorializes staff's processes and procedures during a pandemic. As noted earlier in the presentation, staff follows all HUD-issued guidance so that service is not interrupted for participant households. The proposed program documents were presented as required to the Resident Advisory Board made up of current tenants on the program. Due to the pandemic, a virtual public meeting was held on February 23rd, 2021. All Resident Advisory Board members attended the public meeting. The meeting was advertised on the city's website, published twice in the LA Times, and more than 850 postcard invitations were mailed out to program participants. The Resident Advisory Board did not have any comments, questions, or changes to the documents. The Burbank Housing Authority has not yet received the final program budget for housing assistance payments for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. However, based on last year's expenses, staff is budgeting for an estimated total of $10 million to administer the program. With this level of funding, it is expected that Burbank will fund all current 880 voucher holders on the program. We do not know at this time if additional vouchers can be funded up to the allocation of $1,029, as rental prices in Burbank continue to increase. Staff continues to closely monitor voucher utilization, turnover, and funding, and as funds are available, new applicants will be selected from the waiting list, as outlined in the administrative plan. If approved this evening, the updated administrative plan and annual plan will be submitted to HUD by the deadline of April 17th, 2021, to continue to receive federal funding. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We will now hear from many persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the City Council for up to three minutes on the public hearing item only. To address the council, please call 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. Ms. Jimenez, do we have any callers in line for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, we do not have any callers in the queue.
Okay. Um, there being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Burbank Housing Authority like, uh, like to add anything more? I guess not, we didn't have any callers. Does the City Council have any questions of staff? Just questions? Not discussion, councilor, so questions. Councilmember Schultz, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, I was wondering if you could tell me the current size of our waitlist?
Yes. Currently, our waiting list has approximately, uh, over 30,000 applicants waiting on our waiting list.
Okay, and, uh, the follow-up question I had to that is, I mean, what's the wait time? How long have some of these people been on our waiting list?
The last time that we were open for app, to take new applications for our waiting list was January of 2016. So, we haven't, uh, opened applications since then.
Thank you. And last question, um, can you remind me, what's the total number of unfunded vouchers that we have right now?
Currently, as you saw on the slides, we are funding about 880 vouchers. Our allocation from HUD is $1,029.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
For the report, uh, just to piggyback on Councilmember Schultz's question, so, last time we took, uh, new applications, 2016?
Correct.
So, are we, are we going to do it every five years? Or how, what's our frequency that we've been doing that?
So, our administrative plan guides us, and it states in our administrative plan that when we get to less than, I believe it's 100 residents on the waiting list, at that point, we are to open up for new applicants.
So, do we research as far as who's still interested of the 30,000, since it's been five years?
We do.
Or some, I'm sure some have passed on?
We do. Um, every two years, we do what we call a purge, meaning we mail out an informational letter to everybody on the waiting list, and at that point, they either reply back with any changes that they have had in their family composition, their income, or any of their circumstances since they applied. Uh, we make those changes for them, and if we get, like, returned mail from people that are no longer at that address, um, that's how we process the purge for the current applicants on our waiting list.
That's done every two years, you say?
Yes, correct.
When is the next one due?
We're working on that right now.
As we speak.
As we speak.
All right, thank you very much. It just seems that 30,000 is just such a large number. But so be it.
Any other council members have questions? Uh, Councilmember Springer?
Thank you very much for your report. So, the, um, the C amount that's allocated to us, does it go up every year, and is this an increase from last year?
The allocation amount you're speaking of is the vouchers that we have allocated?
Right, or the, I know, like, we have 880 that we can help, right? And then there are a total of fa, uh, $1,029 that were authorized, I guess, to help, but we just don't have the funds to spread it, or it would be spread too thin. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are. So, the funding that we're currently receiving, um, is just enough to cover our current 880 households.
S- so, is that the same as last year? How many were we helping five years ago? Does it incre-
Go ahead.
Does it increase? All right, go ahead.
880 is approximately 100 less than last year, or the last two to three years. So, with the higher cost of the rental prices in Burbank, it's a tricky balance of our budget, so the higher the cost of the rental market takes more money out of our budget, so it helps less people with our current funding. And I wanted to mention, uh, this morning, we did receive, uh, our current budget for calendar year 2021 from HUD, and they have allocated $10 million, $10.6 million, which is just going to cover what we currently are paying for.
Okay, and do you anticipate, um, I know, um, probably six months ago, eight months ago, rental rates were projected to decline in Burbank, so will that help us spread it out a little bit more?
That should help with lower rental rates. I don't know, Maribel Leland, you may want to?
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor, members of, of the City Council and actually the Housing Authority Board, Maribel Leland, Housing Authority Manager. As Tricia Smith has indicated, the funding is certainly a balancing act with the rental market in Burbank, and it's also a balancing act with HUD, who requires us to use fair-market rents that they publish, uh, for, uh, the Los Angeles areas. So, so it certainly is something that we have to utilize their funding sources and, uh, also their, their information for fair-market rents. We have to utilize the funds that we receive, see what they are indicating as the fair-market rents for the Los Angeles area, and then fall within a range of a payment standard or subsidy level to our households. So, i- it is a cer- a certain number of things that happened. We haven't seen those fair-market rents from HUD that HUD publishes come down, but we, those get published every October, and we review those closely to see if we're still within the guideline that HUD provides to see if we can make any adjustments.
Thank you, that's all my questions.
Uh, Councilmember Anthony, questions? Go ahead, sir.
Uh, we talked about 30,000, the waitlist, and then the units that are available. Where do those units come from? Are those, are those, uh, part of the, um, the, um, affordable housing agreements that we get, those, you know, those deals, the deed restricted stuff? Like, wha- what does that encompass, our, our, our lots of, of Section 8 housing?
Maribel? The, the units in the, that are assisted are a variety of units. As, uh, was presented in the presentation, these are units throughout the community. Some of them may be, um, in, in subsidized housing. We, we do have our partner, the Burbank Housing Corporation. They do have some Section 8 tenants in their, in their portfolio. Uh, there could be some in some of the senior buildings, that we do have some Section 8 participants in the senior buildings here in the community, but they vary. They can be throughout the community, and that's one of the areas that staff, Housing Authority staff does, is communicate to participants who are coming in with a voucher, for example, or who are looking to move, is really giving them their options as to where they can, can, can be. The, the challenging act, again, the balancing act, is related to a fair, a rent that they could afford, so many times, um, some of these subsidized units are the option that they have, and in some cases, they also can utilize their voucher in other communities that have a housing authority. So, we do, uh, get requests for moving out, and, and they're able to port out, is the term, or move out to another community who will then, they can utilize their voucher if it's a, if it's an area that is more reasonable for them to be able to afford.
Any more questions, council members? Uh, seeing none for the questions, um, would the representative of the Burbank Housing Authority wish to make any further comments to the council? Uh, seeing none? I now declare the hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure? Is there any, uh, discussion, or we want to go right into the motion? What is the pleasure? Anybody? Uh, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just recommend that we move right into the motion.
Okay, make the motion, sir.
I'm looking for it right now as we speak. Uh, I recommend to adopt a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Burbank approving, one, the Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for Fiscal Year 2021-22, and updates to the Section 8 Administrative Plan, and, three, authorizing the Executive Director to execute certifications required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Do we have a second? Uh, Nick Schultz is the second? If there's no discussion, council members, I, oh, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Springer?
Just want to bring up that I, I think it's a good idea for us to do everything that we can to encourage more, more funding for Section 8. Just doing simple math, I mean, $10,000 a year to house somebody is so affordable, is so much more affordable than we can do, than we can build a unit. Doing simple math, without compound interest, without discounting back to the present, that, um, that's housing for 50 years, you know, and the present value of that over 50 years would just be a fraction of a half-million dollars, what we, um, spent to build, uh, an affordable unit. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Uh, seeing no other comments, uh, uh, Ms. Jimenez, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes. We have four reports to the council this evening. The first report we have is a presentation of the DeBel Golf Course, the annual report for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 by our Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Marissa Garcia. Good evening and welcome, and you have the mic.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Frutos and council members. I'm Marissa Garcia with the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm joined this evening by Mark Luftman, President of Touchstone Golf. Together, we will provide the council with an overview of the DeBel Golf Course's performance as well as plans for the future. So, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Okay. Interesting, okay. Um... Um, in 2018, following an extensive request-for-proposal process, the, um, City Council selected, or the city selected Touchstone Golf to manage the DeBel Golf Course. On December 11th of 2018, the City Council approved a five-year golf course management agreement with Touchstone. Under this agreement, Touchstone receives an annual management fee of $8,000 and is responsible for DeBel's golf operations, golf maintenance, food and beverage operations, private events, tournament programming. Um, they also, uh, receive a, a revenue, or eligible to receive a revenue sharing component whereby, uh, they can earn 15% of any increase in annual gross margin over the prior year. The city budgets general fund dollars to operate this facility and receives all revenue from the operation to offset the costs. Touchstone officially assumed the operation of the golf course on December 13th of 2018, and two weeks later, on January 1st of 2019, they assumed the operation of the restaurant. Sorry, like, trying to, uh, keep it all change slides. There we go. Uh, Touchstone is a recognized leader in golf course industry with over 100 years of combined experience. They provide comprehensive management services to golf course owners and currently manage 40 golf courses. Touchstone has a lengthy track record of success in cost-effectively managing golf courses, delivering a first-class experience for golfers, providing a stimulating workplace for employees, and optimizing operational and financial outcomes for golf course owners. Part of the key to their success is that they have a customized business model and addresses specific needs of each golf course. With this framework, Touchstone has helped, uh, underperforming golf courses all over the country. This slide, um, illustrates Touchstone's organizational charts. As I mentioned, Mr. Mark Luftman will also be presenting, and joining him and us this evening are also Stan Gonzalez, who's a regional manager for Touchstone, as well as DeBel's General Manager, Jeff Hastings. Upon assuming the operation, Touchstone focused on ensuring hiring and training staff to provide efficient and friendly service. Moreover, they made numerous equipment and operational improvements and completed capital improvement projects at DeBel. Some of the most notable improvements included the replacement of the existing golf cart with a new fleet of low-maintenance lithium-ion battery-powered golf carts. They made some much-needed improvements to the driving range, as well as enhanced of the food and beverage operation by providing a grab-and-go food and beverage item available for purchase at the pro shop. They also updated the menu at the restaurant, along with operating consistent and extended hours. They made some improvements to the Hilltop Restaurant and Bar. They renovated sand bunkers, as well as completed irrigation repairs and replaced golf course netting, and, uh, netting, uh, at the drive range as well. Here, we can see some of the work during the sand bunker project, as well as repairs to the netting. I would like to mention that despite the outdated irrigation system, the tee box, fairway, and grainway, uh, grainway aesthetics have dramatically improved under, uh, Touchstone's, um, purview. Touchstone, uh, team has also coordinated a multitude of special events and tournaments at DeBel. Events included a Valentine's Day dinner, Easter brunch, music on the patios, DeBel's 60th Anniversary Golf Tournament, uh, Development- 60th Anniversary Golf Tournament, a DeBel Open House, CIF High School Cross Country Meet, Veterans Day Golf Tournament, Thanksgiving shotgun golf tournament, Brunch with Santa, and a number of private events such as weddings and parties. These private events and tournaments have been an opportunity to host community members and welcome new visitors to DeBel. DeBel's on target to have an exceptional year in 2020. However, on March 20th, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the entire facility closed its doors to the public for 49 consecutive days. During the 49-day closure of the golf course, all employees were furloughed with the exception of the general manager--
Honorable Mayor, members of the council.
Mr. Hastings and three employees. This minimal staff worked to sustain operations, complete repairs, and perform course maintenance. Additionally, the team proactively developed and implemented health and safety protocols to adapt operational procedures for the eventual reopening. Having this plan in place allowed for the reopening of the golf course on May 8th, just two days after the county lifted the restrictions allowing the reopening of golf courses throughout the county. And since reopening the 18-hole golf course, the par three and disc golf courses have maintained a steady increase of golfers. And weekend reservations for tee times are frequently fully booked from dawn to dusk. However, the pandemic's impacts to tournaments and other private events has been significant. A total of 51 private events and tournaments scheduled for 2020 were were canceled or were canceled during that fiscally during that calendar year. And of these cancellations, 37 were completely canceled and 14 events were rescheduled for 2021. The enhancement to the golf course improved course conditions, the pace of play, and customer service. Combined, these actions have led to an increase in visitor and revenue. Beginning in 2019, rounds of play have steadily increased. Despite the unanticipated closure last year, DeBel 18-hole rounds of play have increased nearly 22%. Combined with par three and disc golf, the overall increase in rounds was 31% in 2020 over 2019. This graph provides a great illustration of how well DeBel has been performing under Touchstone's leadership. You can see the consistent increase in monthly rounds of play from 2018, which is a blue line, through 2020. And 2019 is the green line, and the red is the 2020. While we were pleased with DeBel's performance, we wanted to see how DeBel's growth compared to the national average. According to the National Golf Foundation, from 2019 to 2020, 18-hole golf play increased approximately 14% throughout the nation. DeBel surpassed the national average nearly each month and increased in overall of 21.75%. Furthermore, here we can see DeBel's growth compared to City of Los Angeles' golf courses, the national average, as well as the county. There is definitely a direct correlation between golf play relative to revenue. As previously noted, combined rounds of play increased 31% in 2020. This increase accounted for an overall 37% or $272,000 in revenue from golf rounds. Additionally, there was a significant increase in golf-related activity specifically at the driving range. The majority of the driving range bays are now fully occupied throughout the day and night. This activity translates into a 64% increase or almost $70,000 in driving range revenue from 2019 to 2020. And combined, the golf and driving range revenue increased nearly 41% over the prior year. So while the growth in golf grew in 2020, the food and beverage operation took a big hit. Due to the closures and limited operation, along with the cancellation of tournaments and private events, the food and beverage division only generated $16,267 in 2020, which is nearly $200,000 less than the prior year. So despite the unanticipated 49-day closure of the golf course and the restrictions on the food and beverage operation, in 2020, the combined DeBel operation produced a net income of $237,811. So with with that, I will now turn it over to Mr. Luthman, who will talk about the future plans of DeBel.
Muted? Hello. There we go. City Council, hello. Good to speak with all of you this this evening. It's a real honor and privilege to talk to you again, particularly on the heels of such a such a remarkable year that Marissa just outlined for everybody. I'd like to take a moment just to build on Marissa's comments. And while we are thrilled with the performance so far that we've been able to achieve at the golf course, the thing that we want to get across is that we have a long way to go to continue to improve the facility and to continue to position DeBel as a successful community asset in the in the Burbank community. So a few of those things that we are working on right now to to perform even better is the improving the service experience for the guests when they come to the golf course, ensuring that we are fees are competitive for Burbank residents, that we're offering a terrific value for the residents, and we're continuing with our course improvements, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. But rest assured, we are not satisfied with the performance that we have already achieved. We are strive, get better each and every day. A few of the improvements that we have on the horizons that we'll be working on are improving the irrigation system to allow us to continue to provide strong course conditions for our golfers and do throw in a way that utilizes water efficiently. We will be enhancing our customer point of sale system, the sand bunkers throughout the golf course. We've just recently completed a driving range asphalt overlay process and that has improved the driving range and will be continuing with improvements to the landing area to ensure we have good balls and good mats for our customers, improving the tees throughout the golf course, and also making enhancements to the restaurant and bar. The if we can go back just, yeah, one slide there. So one of the things that we talked about two years ago when we started operating DeBel was our desire to position the golf course not just as an asset for golfers, but a community asset for everybody in the community. The goal being we wanted all Burbank residents to say, gosh, we're so happy that DeBel is in our community. There's so much going on there. Whether we're a golfer or not, we're visiting DeBel. And I just included here in this slide an example of some of the events that we've hosted in the past for the community. For instance, a frozen event, Santa, breakfast with Santa program, a silly Saturday program, and then the 60th Anniversary Golf Tournament. This is this is these are just a few examples of what are dozens of events that we've hosted at the golf course for golfers and non-golfers alike. Unfortunately, with the complexity that COVID has brought, we really haven't been able to have the events and have the indoor catered events and such that we would like to have. These are what we've done in the future or in the past. And then in the future, we will be doing similar events to involve the community in DeBel. So everybody is getting a chance to visit the golf course and enjoy themselves. Okay. And before we get into questions and wrap things up, I really wanted to take a moment and recognize the dedicated members of our team at DeBel. Jeff Hastings is our general manager. Oscar Sanchez is our superintendent. Joaquin Urboso is our head pro and director of instruction. Ashley Walson is our food and beverage director, and Meredith Anderson is our our private event sales coordinator. All are totally dedicated to the vision at DeBel. And I think the results that we've achieved are due in large part to their hard work. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Marissa and Gwen and the rest of the Burbank Parks and Recs team. It's really been a true partnership, and they've worked with us diligently over the last two years in order to achieve these results. These results don't happen without by accident. They happen because there's a whole lot of dedicated people pulling in the right direction to make this a reality. So that is that is where we have been, and and that is our vision of where we are going at DeBel.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Garcia, for the presentation. Council members, any questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you to the both of you for for this update. All I have to say is we've come a long way from those early years that we were having problems with the golf course. I just want to congratulate Touchstone Golf for partnering with us. They've not only been a great partner with the city, they've been a great partner with the golfers and non-golfers as well, as you can see by some of those bulletins that they put together. So I encourage the community to come up and visit the restaurant. You don't have to be a golfer to come up and enjoy good food and enjoy the view of the surroundings. You see lots of deer running around there. So come up and visit, enjoy the scenery. So like I said again, you don't have to be a golfer to come up and enjoy that restaurant. So once again, thank you to the both of you, and I could see some a lot of success moving forward. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Anthony, I believe you had your hand up. No? Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I just want to echo the Vice Mayor's comments. I think that it was just terrific that not only were we able to implement safeguards that kept our players safe and continue golfing, we actually saw improvement in our revenue stream. And I think that that's a real, you know, it is an understatement to say that that was a real success in an otherwise turbulent year. So I just wanted to tip my hats to all of the staff at DeBel, keep up the great work. And I think this is really terrific news. Thank you.
Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
I'd like to congratulate and thank Touchstone and Marissa's team for the amazing turnaround because it has come a long way. And I often dine up there at the restaurant. It's a beautiful setting, and Mr. Hastings' team does a great job. He has a very, very nice staff. The food is good. The service is good. It's a nice setting. And one thing I'm particularly glad to see is the are people at the par three court. I never used to see people there, but now I see golfers, some children, golfers with little league golf clubs and people playing frisbee. So there's a lot going on there. And I just want and I look I look forward to the future. And I'm with Vice Mayor Telemontes. You you don't have to be a member of anything. You can just go and dine, eat outside, and it's it's just very, very nice. It's a little treasure in Burbank. So thank you very much for the report.
My question before I make my comments is, looking at the revenue, the last time we discussed this, the par three golf course was always in question. And as I'm looking at the revenue, it shows a 99.33%. What'd you guys end up doing with the par three course that turned it around? What'd you guys do?
Well, it's a it's a great question, and it's and we're we're very excited about this. I think there's been a number of things. And once again, we've had the support of the city staff as well as that of our of our team at the course that have done that. But it's it's a it's a pretty simple formula, actually. We've we've maintained it better. We've increased the level of of maintenance of the par three course. And it's the Grow the Game initiatives that we have been implementing to get new golfers out and people that want to practice on a shorter golf course. And those are the people that are playing the par three course. So it's, you know, it's a it's a it's a terrific little amenity, and people are we're so pleased that people are using it more and more.
Well, I was very happily surprised when I saw versus our last conversation with the par three course. So you guys get five gold shiny stars. That's awesome. And Marissa, you and your team, thank you. I mean, this we knew how hot this was, you know, 18 months ago, and Council Vice Mayor Telemontes, Councilmember Springer, myself, you know, we were at odds at that time. We didn't have our two new council members on the council yet. But keep up the great work. And I really, from a business perspective, I'm glad to see the numbers and, you know, going up trending up regarding the revenue because that was a big, big issue to a lot of the residents. But thank you, and thanks to residents for giving us the patience to turn this around. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, my history with the golf course goes back more than 18 months. It goes like almost 10 years.
True, true.
But anyway, I just want to ask, Mr. Luthman, are you providing high school teams, especially the two that are here in Burbank, do they come up as discounted rates or free to to practice?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they they do. And and we've actually implemented programs through our Touchstone Golf Foundation to raise money to help support the high school teams.
Oh, that's excellent. Do they come up for free then?
They do.
Okay. And you I know you have you also have meets, right? I mean, when they come on, we host--
They do. Yeah, we host, we host. We do, yeah. Matches.
Great. Excellent. Thank you very much. Keep it up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This is a note and file, so no actions needed on behalf of the council. But thank you for the update. Okay, we will move on to item number 11, which is the second report. This is an informational-only update on Raising Cane's Restaurant at 1750 West Olive Avenue. But before I allow Deputy City Planner Scott Plambak make his presentation to the council and the community, because I was I was taking a lot of notes on the callers that called in, I I will request that our city attorney begin from the legal standpoint to answer the community's questions, and then I will allow our city planner to update the council, and then the council can give their thoughts. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did that because I unmuted my computer rather than using my mic here. So I apologize to everybody for the feedback. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community and staff. The mayor asked me to briefly discuss the reason the item was brought as a note and file is I think most people are aware that the city has, as explained in the staff report, the city staff and specifically the building official is the one that is charged along with planning and other departments to go through when we receive an application for what what needs to happen for this type of of use. And that through that process, which Mr. Plambak is going to explain in detail to the council, the building official did issue-- the building official did issue building permits in December. And as most people know that live around there or have driven by, the demolition has already occurred. The building is already being reconstructed. The permits were issued, as the staff will explain, pursuant to the building official's authority as a ministerial action. And that's why this is a note and file for the council because of the fact that those building permits have been issued. It's a ministerial act and that the developer has already implemented those permits and has already, as everyone knows, is actually partway into the construction of the new restaurant as opposed to the bank. So, unless there's something further you'd like me to say now, I think we can wait. And I wanted to say that besides myself and besides planning staff, Mr. McDougal should also be a participant at this point or panelist, whatever we call it. He's also available and he's been working very closely with the planning staff on the issues around this restaurant. So, unless there's something further, that's.
Because I want to make sure we get the legal, you know, why the city did what they did. So, Mr. McDougal, if there's anything else that could be added before the city planner weighs in from the city attorney's office, that based on the comments of the community this evening?
Nothing further at this time, aside from what the city attorney just stated.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Plambak, the mic is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Furtis. I do have a pre-recorded presentation tonight, so please play the video. And members of the public. My name is Scott Plambak, Deputy City Planner. Tonight's staff will provide an update on the approval of Raising Cane's Restaurant at 1750 West Olive Avenue. In September 2019, Raising Cane's approached the city about using the existing bank building for a drive-through restaurant. This led to a pre-simile review and consultation about a possible fast food restaurant with drive-through for the property located at 1750 West Olive Avenue. The applicant, Raising Cane's, submitted for building permit in May 2020 and building permits were eventually issued on December 16, 2020. The site is located at the corner of Olive Avenue and South Orchard Drive in the city's C2 zoning district. The applicant undertook tenant improvement work that reduced the square footage of the former bank building from 5,300 square feet to 2,476 square feet. The tenant improvement worked and reduced building footprint, facilitated onsite parking to meet the parking requirements for a fast food restaurant and also to improve the onsite circulation. In addition, the former bank building had non-conforming street-side setbacks. And now the improvements resulted in the project meeting the required five-foot setback for the zoning district. Staff considered the following when analyzing the project. First, staff determined if the proposed use is permitted by right or conditionally permitted in the underlying zoning district and assessed whether the building is being demolished more than 50% of its replacement value because the existing building had non-conforming front inside yard setbacks along Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive. The CT zoning for the subject site allowed the previously existing bank use as well as a proposed fast food restaurant. Next, staff considered the drive-through itself. Because the bank building had a drive-through window that was constructed in 1974, staff used the applicable zoning requirements as noted in Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11609D, modification of businesses with existing drive-throughs, to confirm that the existing drive-through service window for the building could be used for the proposed fast food restaurant. This Burbank Municipal Code Section provides a criterion in which the city must determine whether a drive-through built before December 26, 1998 may continue to operate. Specifically, this section states, "An existing residentially adjacent establishment with a drive-through legally operating without a conditional use permit for the drive-through prior to December 26, 1998 may continue to operate, provided however that the establishment may not be expanded or enlarged or otherwise modified until the proposed work has been evaluated by the building official. If the building official determines that the desired expansion, enlargement and modification will, one, prolong the useful life of the service window or, two, increase the pre-permit value building valuation by 10% or more, the property owner must obtain a conditional use permit for the drive-through prior to issuance of any building permits or other development permits and must comply with subsection 10-11608-1 and 2. Pre-permit building valuation shall be the value of the building assessed by the building official as determined from the most recent edition of the International Conference of Building Officials. As noted in the staff report, Section 10-11609D outlines the requirements for evaluating a modification of a business with an existing drive-through use, which is exactly what this location is, a building with a drive-through service window built before December 26, 1998. For this reason, the Burbank Code Section was used instead of City Code Section 10-11811, continuation use of structure. This section of the code was written to facilitate the adaptive reuse of drive-throughs that were built prior to December 26, 1998. And this site met the aforementioned criteria. When considering Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11609D, the following determinations need to be made. First, the existing drive-through service window location would have to remain in the same location. Consistent with the provisions of Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11609D, Raising Cane's submitted a proposal that did not relocate the existing service window, but instead retained the service window in its current location, therefore not prolonging the useful life of the service window. This section does not prohibit the installation of another service window for payment. Second, the building footprint could not be modified in such a way that would result in an increase in the pre-building permit valuation by 10% or more of the existing building as determined by the city building official using the most recent edition of the International Conference of Building Officials, now the International Code Council Building Valuation Data of 2020. In making the calculation, the building official determined the modification did not result in an increase of pre-building permit valuation by 10% or more. In making sure that consistent baselines are used, the building official looked at the valuation of the existing building by using the building valuation data from the International Code Council. The value of the building was calculated by the building official at $823,614. Next, the building official used pre-construction valuation of the proposed tenant improvement work to renovate the structure for use of the fast food restaurant. The valuation determined by the building official was $354,885. The reduction in value is attributed to the proposed improvements to the reduced building footprint to 2,476 square feet. The figure of $354,885 is the valuation of the building only in applying valuation calculations based on the building valuation data of the International Code Council. It is important to note that this number clarifies the difference between valuation noted in the building permit, which is identified as $492,000, but this $492,000 included additional valuation for the proposed mechanical plumbing and electrical work. The resulting building officials, building valuation determined that the tenant improvement work did not result in a 10% or more increase in building valuation. The U.S. Bank building did not meet the required five-foot setback along West Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive. As a result, the building had non-conforming setbacks. This non-conformity triggered the review listed in Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11810-4. Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11810-4 states, "Since such structure be voluntarily demolished to an extent 50% or less of its replacement cost, any non-conforming features or portions of the structure that are demolished shall not be replaced unless they conform to the standards of this chapter. Non-conforming features or portions of its structure include, but are not limited to, non-conforming walls and/or roofs. Such portions or features shall be considered demolished if underlying structural elements such as foundations, framing or tresses are removed. Please note, removal of surface or finished features such as siding, plaster, drywall, shingles, tiles, such as for purposes of replacement or repair only shall not be considered demolition of the underlying element." Per the approved building plans for the demolition work associated with the tenant improvement work, it was determined by the Building and Safety Division that the scope of work would result in a demolition of less than 50% of the structure's replacement cost. Per the city's building official, there are two factors involved in determining demolition relative to 50% in replacement cost. First, determining the valuation of the structure as previously provided in applying the building valuation data from the International Code Council. Second is the method in which the existing building's demolition is calculated. When staff analyzes demolition plans, all portions of the demolition are considered in the applicable 50% of replacement cost. An equally weighted average of all portions of the structure that include foundation, walls and roof is used to determine the total percent demolition of the structure. The following percentages of demolition were determined by the Building and Safety Division to apply to the project. Foundation 32.2%, Walls 84.4%, and Roof 32.5%. The weighted average of these respective demolitions resulted in a 49.7% demolition. Since the demolition resulted in less than 50% demolition, it was determined that the building could be used for the proposed fast food restaurant and a building permit was issued for the project. The proposed improvements to the building will result in the building meeting the required setbacks along Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive. The next slide provides the breakdown of the building official's demolition calculation. Consistent with the definition of non-conforming features or portions of its structure, the Building and Safety Division undertook an analysis to calculate the 50% of the replacement cost of the structure. The basis for determining construction cost valuation is the building valuation data from the International Code Council. Building and Safety staff undertook the following analysis to determine compliance consistent with the Burbank Municipal Code. First, Building and Safety Division identified the occupancy types for the uses in the building. For Raising Cane, the occupancy type is A2 Restaurant. While for the U.S. Bank building, the occupancy type is B for Business. Next, the cost of construction was calculated based on the square footage multiplied by the occupancy type. For Raising Cane's, the square footage of the building is 2,476 square feet multiplied by $143.33 equals a construction cost of $354,885. For the U.S. Bank building, the construction cost is $155.84 multiplied by 5,280 square feet for a construction cost of $823,614. The 50% replacement cost for the U.S. building is calculated as follows. $823,614 multiplied by 50% valuation, which results in a 50% replacement cost of $411,807. The construction cost of Raising Cane's is $354,885. And this does not exceed the 50% replacement cost of $411,807 for the U.S. Bank building. Therefore, the Building and Safety Division determined that 50% of the valuation in the form of building versus the construction cost of the revised building was not exceeded. The replacement speaker at the corner of Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive is legal. Raising Cane's replacement speaker is no closer than the existing speaker to the residential properties along Orchard Drive. If Raising Cane's proposes a replacement speaker for the project that is not at the same location of the previously existing speaker or is located closer to the residence than the original speaker, then a conditional use permit will be required. If Raising Cane's needed to pursue a CAP for the change of location for the speaker, then the CAP would be reviewed only for the speaker request and not the permitted fast food restaurant use. Staff has received emails from community members expressing concerns about the potential impact Raising Cane's may have on the neighborhood with regards to noise, parking, trash and traffic. Raising Cane's is aware of community concerns and has expressed an interest to develop a plan that addresses issues brought up by the neighbors. Some of the operational plan components being discussed between staff and Raising Cane includes trash, parking, littering, hours of operation, outreach, a point of contact and drive-through queuing. Raising Cane's has been informed of the need for ongoing compliance with the city's noise regulations, including compliance with Chapter 1, Article 11.5, which is residentially adjacent uses. And this is specific to Burbank Municipal Code Sections 10-1150 through 10-1154 while operating. In addition, because the project site is adjacent to residentially zone properties, Raising Cane's has been informed of the need to comply with Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1154C, no congregating. This code section states that, "For the purpose of noise abatement and residential sounds, no person conducting a commercial or industrial use on a site that is within 150 feet of any residentially zoned property shall permit the employees, agents, associates or contractors of the non-residential use to congregate behind the structure containing the non-residential use or any open area or public right-of-way that separates the property containing the non-residential use from adjacent residentially zoned properties during late night hours." Furthermore, Raising Cane's has been informed of the need for the business to ensure ongoing compliance with Burbank Code Section 9-3-2008, which limits noise decibels from mechanical equipment to 55 dBAs for residentially properties adjacent to commercial uses from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and 45 dBAs from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Staff has also received emails with concerns about traffic. City zoning regulations do not require additional traffic analysis because the proposed fast food use, as well as the prior bank use of both permitted land uses within the underlying C2 zoning district, and both are consistent with the pattern of development envisioned in the applicable general plan land use designation of corridor commercial. However, Raising Cane and the city will monitor drive-through queuing and address any potential onsite and offsite stacking issues. Raising Cane understands that the city may implement any required traffic safety measures necessary to address issues related to traffic ingress and egress onto Olive Avenue and Orchard Drive. This could include, but is not limited to restricting turning movements or other measures to address safety concerns. Raising Cane's has informed staff they will have people on site who manage traffic for the drive-through customers. As noted in the staff report, Raising Cane's is a fast food restaurant used allowed to operate on the project site. Raising Cane's complies with Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-11609D, modification of businesses with existing drive-throughs, and therefore can operate the drive-through operation that was constructed prior to 1998 with continued use of an existing service window without obtaining a conditional use permit. Because Raising Cane's is an allowed use, the drive-through is allowed to operate per Municipal Code Section 10-11609D and issuance of building permits was ministerial and correctly issued. Staff has been working with Raising Cane's to address community concerns with noise, trash, littering and traffic and are working with the business to develop an operational plan to address potential operational impacts. Staff recommends that the city council note and file this report. City staff is available to answer any questions that the city council may have. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Council members, who would like to start the conversation? Anybody? Go on once. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first questions for staff, specifically, one of the callers, former council member Murphy, talked about, you know, his suggestion that it was an abandoned use of the property, the drive-through window. I was wondering if you could just address that point and if that was something that you looked at in making the determinations early on?
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. So, when we looked at whether the drive-through use could continue or not, we looked at Section 10-11609D. And in that section, there's two criterias to allow the drive-through use to continue. The first one is, of course, not prolonging the life of the drive-through window. And the second criteria is that the improvements don't increase 50% of the value of the property. There's nothing in that code section about abandonment or amortization of the drive-through use itself. So, we could not apply that point. We understand the comment, the question, but the section that's used to analyze whether the drive-through could continue does not have that requirement.
I see. And my follow-up question, I know it was mentioned several times in the presentation and the report, but I just want to try to make this clear for everyone who's tuning in tonight. So, because of the way that that parcel is zoned, is it staff's contention that by right, they can put in a fast food restaurant on this parcel? Is that correct?
Correct. So, the restaurant itself is a permitted use on the site. And as I mentioned, the drive-through use is allowed to continue based on Code Section 10-11609.
Okay. But what you're also saying is that if they moved the speaker closer to the residential areas, for example, or if they demolished greater than 50%, then there are other events that could trigger further review by the city?
So, for the speaker point, if they did move the speaker to a different location where there was not a previous speaker, they would have to get a conditional use permit for that speaker. But the use permit would only be for the speaker itself and not for the use.
I see. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may have more questions later, but that's, I suppose, good for now.
Okay. Any other council member would like to ask questions, comments? This is a note and file. Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
I don't have many questions because today I met with the city attorney and assistant city attorney and with Patrick Prescott and Fred Ramirez, and, and they know, and I disagree with the interpretation of our ordinance sections for the approval of this project and the issuance of the building permit, and I want to tell you why. I also agree that the window is abandoned, and I feel like everything that's being done at that property is, extends the useful life of that. It was, in my opinion, a dead window. And it says also on page two of the staff report that the property owner must obtain a conditional use permit for the drive-through prior to the issuance of any building permits or other development permits and must comply with subsections ten dash one dash sixteen oh eight, one and two. It doesn't conform with Item Two, which says the restaurant must have a separate waiting lane for drive-through, which it does, but it must have separate aisles necessary for ingress to or egress from the property or access to any of the street, to the parking spaces. And if you look at the site plan, the ingress and egress to the property from Olive and Orchard, there's just one way in and one way out. So I can understand the requirement of that, but it looks to me like we're not following that based on the site plan. also, I, and I'll just also point out that I know some of the, this ordinance sections were disqualified as being not relevant, but in eighteen oh one, for the non-conforming land uses and structures, the intent of this article is to permit, permit, to permit these non-conformities to continue until they are removed or required to be terminated, but not to encourage their survival. And also, in Section eighteen ten, such structure may not be enlarged or altered in a way which increases its non-conformity. From what I understand, the window is a legal non-conforming use, so, and it's a, the use change from a bank to a fast food restaurant, everything that's being done there extends the econo, the useful life of that bank window, and adding a second window extends the life of that. And I also had some, I was following the communication from the neighborhood, and you know they've been pleading with us now for at least six weeks with their emails, and please look at this, and what about this? initially, in February twenty-first, the, the estimate of the existing building value was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and for the proposed restaurant improvements was four hundred and ninety-two thousand. That really piqued my interest because it disqualified the project from the beginning at that point. And I know on March fifth, it came back that the, the cost of the existing bank building was estimated at eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and the improvement, the restaurant improvement valuation was about three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three fifty-four and some change. And at that point, it was said that the difference between the original estimate of the restaurant and this new estimate was likely site improvements. And so then that changed again to not being attributable to site improvements, but to plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. so, I, a question that I have is that the three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, or a comment I should have, should include electrical, plumbing, and mechanical to make it an operating restaurant? And Raising Cane apparently provided the, the construction cost of the restaurant at four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And, and I understand to keep the comparison, to compete, compete the comparison, to make the comparison apples and apples, but if the three hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars doesn't include the mechanical plumbing and electrical, then it should also be deducted from the eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. You need those to operate a building, and certainly you need those to operate a restaurant. And so I, I disagree with that, and if, if that's, if that's deducted, then it's, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't work. It doesn't make that fifty percent, can't be demolished more than fifty percent of the replacement value. And, and so as I was going through this, I, I just continued to have concerns about it, and especially the access, you know, that apparently they're not even following the ten dash one dash sixteen oh eight, Item Two. There is no double ingress and egress at the access points. And so for that reason, I do not support the note and file on this. And also, on the parking, the business owner is exploring options to find off-street parking for employees and to direct staff away from parking on adjacent residential streets. That's not, that hasn't even been resolved. But that's not, you know, my major issues are, it doesn't seem to be consistent with our ordinance. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Any other council member wish to weigh in? Seeing none, I will close out this, which was one comment, one question of staff. What are we going to do when the traffic goes into the neighborhoods? Because that was brought up a lot. What are we going to do to help the residents when the concerns start coming in that it's becoming an in-and-out type situation or portals? That came up a lot. Anybody?
Well, as I mentioned in the report, we will be monitoring the situation and working with Raising Cane's, and we do have David Krisky, our Assistant Community Development Director in Transportation, if you can talk a little bit more about potential solutions if there is an issue with the offsite. I also just want to point out that the, that the site was, was amended, or the site, the site time was changed, so that the stacking on site would increase, that the stacking for the drive-through itself increased, and exceeds our code requirements. So the code requirement for stacking on site for a drive-through is a hundred and sixty feet and the proposed is two hundred and fifty feet, and also they are meeting requirements for parking for a restaurant on site.
Is, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Ramirez, followed by Councilmember Springer.
Mayor, just want to clarify to you, I believe there was a question regarding ten dash one sixteen oh eight two on a separate waiting lane for drive-throughs, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at the site plan, there's actually delineation between the drive-through travel lane and the ingress and egress that is two directions, two-way direction, both off of Orchard and Olive. So in reality, the project actually does provide for that separation as required under the provision under ten dash one sixteen oh eight two. In addition to that, I think to your, to your larger question, Mayor, where you asked about, you know, the neighborhood and potential impacts associated with operation, I think you, you recall, and you guys have been here longer than we have, that I think when Tolaria went in, there was the development of, you know, funds for neighborhood protection through our Neighborhood Protection Program, which we actually have in our general plan, and I believe this area falls within that particular category, and my Assistant Director colleague in transportation planning, Mr. Krisky, may be able to elaborate, but there are tools in the toolbox, so to speak, for the city to be able to implement additional measures to help protect the neighborhood.
And what are they?
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. David Krisky, Assistant Director for Transportation. So yes, as mentioned before, for a variety of reasons that, that the Planning Division outlined, we don't look at this project from a traffic standpoint before it goes in because it is permitted as a, and as existing permitted use. However, separate from that, the council, as Mr. Ramirez says, has options for protecting neighborhoods, and in fact, our general plan includes the concept of neighborhood protection plans where we think that residential neighborhoods that are adjacent to busy streets or, or active commercial zones can be protected from the spillover effects caused by those uses into the neighborhood. As you know, your, one of your primary goals is to protect single-family neighborhoods, and we can do that through a neighborhood protection plan. There is, as Mr. Ramirez said, that area, that neighborhood is designated as a neighborhood protection zone already. It's part of the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Program that was established probably at the late nineties, but these plans can be updated, and as conditions change, we can look at ways to protect those neighborhoods. That's exactly what the council did with the Alameda North Plan and the Tolaria Project. And so we would potentially recommend, if the council so desires, to, to proceed in a similar fashion. We can look at a variety of improvements broadly on how to protect neighborhoods. They go from decreasing to increasing levels of, of severity. You can start by looking at turn restrictions in and out of streets, turn restrictions in and out of driveways. You can look at parking management, parking permits, permit zones, or, or hourly parking restrictions. You can go further and, and actually implement physical barriers to entry into the neighborhood. Partial diverters or full diverters or cul-de-sacs would be the most extreme end. And the one, the one other concept in neighborhood protection planning is you don't necessarily want to look at an individual street, although you may eventually look at one specific street like Orchard because it's the most impacted, but you want to look at all of the streets together because there can be spillover effects and, and, and other consequences if you make one change to one street. And again, the council saw that with Alameda North because the other streets were affected, and we wanted to deal with it holistically. So through the neighborhood protection planning, which is outlined in the general plan, that's a broad way to protect the neighborhood from increases in traffic and, you know, impacts to adjacent commercial development.
Okay. Councilmember Springer, I saw your hand up earlier. You have the mic?
I have a question, you know, in response to Mr. Ramirez. What does it mean then by the drive-through lane shall be a separate lane from circulation routes? And I know that there is a separate circulation route to go to the pay window, window and the pickup window, and aisles necessary for ingress to or egress from the property? Because if you go, for example, the Del Taco at Alameda and Glen Oaks, there are two ways, there's a lane for the drive-through and there's a lane for the parking. On the way out, there's a lane to exit the drive-through and a lane for the parking to go around. And you, if you look at other drive-throughs, I don't know the history behind all of those, many of them have a similar situation where there is two ingress, there's ingress to the drive-through and ingress to the parking. And so what does it mean when it says separate aisles necessary for ingress to or egress? What does it, what is meant by separate aisles to access the property, ingress and egress?
So there is one drive, there is one driveway into the property on both sides, but once you get into the property, there's separate drive aisles, which are those set, set up for the parking, the parking lot area where you can park and go, you know, through the parking lot, find a parking space, and then exit. And at the same time, using the same driveway entrance, there's a separate drive aisle, which is a drive-through aisle by itself, and that's separated physically from the drive-through aisle for the parking lot for circulation purposes. So both requirements, as noted on the plans, comply with that requirement in Item Two of ten dash one sixteen oh eight.
I, I realize there is the separate circulation around the building, but I don't see separate ingress and egress. And also, and I can understand the need for that because it would help with the backup because the neighbor sent us a drone's eye view of drive-through lanes, and in one of the pictures, and I don't know when this was, the drive-through lane was a quarter mile long, and they alleged that the average car stack is thirty-six cars, and it looks like from the site plan, there is access to the drive-through from Orchard. You would just take a right into the property and then take a hard left. So does that mean cars will stack on Orchard and also Olive? And so since there aren't two ingress points, how that's going to be quite a stack? And even the people who need to leave their neighborhood to go around, there's the median there at Olive and Orchard, the center median, that looks like it was put there as a traffic calming measure. I, I don't feel like that's fair to the neighborhood not to have double ingress and egress, like we see at some of our other drive-through.
Mayor, can I re-
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. So in looking at the site plan, Councilmember Springer, I think, I know there's a lot of information on this, so it might be a little confusing as far as the numbers, but there is only one way in to the actual drive-through aisle, and that is at the point closest to West Olive Avenue, and as far as once you enter into Orchard or come out of Orchard, that entrance and those drive aisles where you see the two arrows, one in and one out, is directly accessing the parking lot. There is an area there where you have a crosshatch section that shows a path of travel from the building through the, through the drive-through aisle, bush enclosure, but that's not, there is no way to actually get a vehicle and enter through, like a hard left, as you're mentioning, into the drive aisle. You'd actually, into the drive-through aisle, you'd actually have to go all the way in and then enter into the drive-through aisle entrance, which is at its closest point at West Olive Avenue.
There's no drive access then from Orchard?
There is access to the property both off of Orchard and off of Olive. The access to the drive aisle happens when you get to the point closest to West Olive, then you're able to circulate through the drive aisle, and then you come back out onto the, onto the parking lot area where that arrow is shown kind of on the northern portion of the structure. So there's separate entry points for the drive aisle, and those are separated by physical barriers around the perimeter from the drive aisles of the parking lot itself.
So what could, what, somebody from taking that hard left into the drive-through? Is there a barrier there?
It's hard to see here, but there are actual barriers that limit the access to the actual drive aisle, which would basically be across oncoming traffic that is exiting off of Orchard, and then attempting to make a very sharp turn if they're even able to get across what is basically almost a five-foot crosshatch section of that pedestrian path to bring trash to and from the building itself.
They could cross that, make a hard left if they wanted to.
It's, it's not designed for vehicle access, so any vehicle attempting to do that would actually probably jackknife itself into the, into the drive aisle with the building itself there.
Okay, thank you. There's still not double access from ingress and egress from Olive? I'm just saying, that's what it's in sixteen oh eight. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Staff, is there anything else to add before we close out this note and file?
You know what I do-
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Springer.
How are we going to handle the BRT and this, and the drive-through here and the potential stack on Olive?
Well, again, this is David again. We do need to work with Metro with their final configuration, and this use isn't just the only one we have to consider. There are driveways throughout- throughout Olive, and there will be opportunities or situations, and at streets as well, where there'll be right-turning cars probably waiting to turn. That's one part of a bus lane within a street where you don't get the full effect of a busway like you do on the orange line where it's completely dedicated. You will have, right-turning vehicles will stop the bus and require the bus to leave the lane. And that happens at a street intersection, that'll happen at a driveway, and that will happen if there is queuing into and out of an adjacent business. So it will slow the BRT, slow that down, and it will have to accommodate by, you know, moving out of the way. That's the one aspect of a curb-running BRT that does introduce some conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. If there's nothing more, council members, yes, Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be very brief. I think this question is for our city attorney and/or Mr. McDougall. I just want to be really crystal clear for the public who's watching. Because this isn't on appeal or present before the Council in any other way, as I understand it, there's not much more that we can do but note and file at this point. Is my understanding correct, or am I missing anything?
That's correct.
Okay. Then the only thing I'd like to just close with, Mr. Mayor, by way of comment, is I really appreciate everything that Councilmember Springer has shared tonight, and I would encourage staff to work with the community. I think we've all seen clearly from the public comment, we've received both in emails and calls, that the community didn't feel involved. And so moving forward, as you're looking at a neighborhood protection plan and those strategies, please do continue to talk to the neighbors in that area. And I think we'll be better, we'll be better off for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Anthony?
I want to, you know, echo all the sentiments that my fellow councilmembers have said. This is, you know, it's difficult that we're here now at the end of this, talking about it. You know, the pandemic hit a lot of mom-and-pops and family-owned businesses, but the ones that did survive are these big corporate chains, and unfortunately, that's who's coming in to do business. I'm hoping that our economic plan moving forward is to get more family-owned and small mom-and-pop local businesses into these spaces. But until then, you know, economic development is key, and if someone wants to do business and they have a buy right, unfortunately, there's no way to stop them. But at the same time, you know, they're going to start selling chicken and making money, and there's jobs there. And so, you know, there's good and bad, and we have to take it all in stride. So thank you all for this report.
Councilmember Springer?
I want to say one last thing for the neighbors. I mean, they have been pleading with us for over six weeks, and they were concerned that it was going to be too late. The restaurant would be finished and open before their questions would be answered. And, you know, they were told at some times, "Oh, our staff load, we don't have the staff. You'll have to wait until the middle of next week for our response." So they've been patient, and they have trusted the system. And I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to prolong anything anymore than it already has, but I just want to thank the neighborhood for coming out and sharing all their concerns with us. Obviously, they're very important. If it was in my neighborhood, it would be important to me to come out and ask the questions, right? When it comes to buy right, you know, that's pretty much what we were told. So once again, thank you for the neighborhood to coming out, engaging, emailing us. We got all your emails. I asked the questions that were asked of me by the residents that emailed me. So here we are. So thank you very much for everybody.
Okay, thank you, council members. Let's move on to the next item this evening. The next report is an update on the Burbank brand implementation. Will the Public Information Officer Simone McFarland please present the item?
Yes, just one second. So, good evening, City Council. I'm Simone McFarland. As the mayor indicated, I'm representing the Public Information Office tonight. And Kevin Gray and I, who is, Kevin Gray is with our IT department, and I, we have two different presentations that we're going to bring to you tonight regarding implementation of the new brand and a new website. Very exciting. Kevin will be speaking on the website within the next item, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the brand implementation tonight. So as you're aware, the new brand is meant to supplement the city seal and is by no means replacing it. The City Council approved the usage protocols at the last meeting on June 16th, and these are still in place. The new brand was developed to replace a large amount of existing logos and graphics that the city was using before. We wanted to bring unity and to reflect our city government as a city who serves our public well. And by using a brand identity that's flexible, we're able to achieve that goal. The city brand is made up of many components, and this includes the logo, which is reflected by the Burbank B, the font and the words "City of Burbank," and the hidden play button that is found in the center of the B, which symbolizes media and play over time, beginning years ago with the cassette recorder and most recently with one of our new businesses, Netflix. You can see the elements of the play button throughout our marketing materials, including the PowerPoint template. Lastly, our brand contains gradient colors. These colors are bright and diverse, and the gradient invokes forward movement. All of these attributes are found within our own city. Each of the departments has selected colors from the palette to represent their team, and as you can see from this slide, their colors reflect who they are. Fire, of course, selected their natural red and orange, their trademark colors. The police department picked more muted colors to reflect their seriousness in upholding the law. Park and Rec has selected cheery colors that represent the outdoors, and many others. In the last meeting with the PIO subcommittees, members Mayor Frudos and Vice Mayor Telemontes requested that the City Council be able to select their own colors. After presenting a variety of options to the subcommittee, they selected three for the City Council to consider, and I'll let them share the reasons they picked these, as they can better state their opinions and the reasons why we chose these. Additionally, the subcommittee reviewed the brand implementation options for the city vehicles. Presented here are the mock-ups for public works vehicles. Staff proposes placing the new logo in the play buttons on the side of the vehicle with both the city seal and the Burbank B on the back. The graphic here shows what the stickers would look like on a Toyota Prius. Please note that the colors would change based on the department's vehicles and which colors they have that represent themselves. And also, we would not be changing the police or fire vehicles. This photo shows what the brand would look like on a truck. And lastly, this mock-up is for a street sweeper. So as you can tell, they all look very similar. As a summary, these would be, these stickers would be placed on the vehicles as they come in for maintenance, and the old stickers are depleted. This concludes my presentation, and I'm open for questions. And I'd like to just go and revert back to the three selections of the colors for the City Council to review tonight. And I'll leave this up unless you ask me to take it down.
Council members, anybody like to start? Vice Mayor, why don't you start with your thoughts on your recommendations as a subcommittee?
Yeah, you know what? I want to listen to my colleagues before I go ahead. And obviously, we got three here that we decided, between you and I, Mr. Mayor, we recommended these three to present to our colleagues. And I want to see what they feel like at first glance. I want to hear their comments.
Okay. I guess I'll nominate somebody. Councilmember Springer, would you like to, oh, actually, Councilmember Anthony, you go first.
Yeah, this is great. I love these colors. I wanted to ask, so there's a list here, you gave us a list of the usages. On the right column, the green column, Burbank B, that would be, that would be the City Council logo? That's what you're saying? No?
Correct, correct.
Okay. But city seal is, that's the old city seal, like on the pin, right?
Yes. So we still use the city seal, and you're looking at the protocol sheet, correct? The attachment?
Brand usage policy, this one here.
So that was reviewed by City Council before, and what they did is we selected certain times we will use the city seal, and certain times we will use the Burbank B. The general consensus was that when it comes from City Council, from or to City Council, it would have the city seal. And if it is more of a marketing piece, then it would have the Burbank B. And that is what's shown on that sheet. And then there is sometimes that we have both, such as in press releases and the state of the city.
Okay. My only question, I love the colors that were given. The city seal, do we ever use that? I know on the pins and some of the other, like, actual tangible seals, it's shiny, like with a gold or silver tint. Do we use that on any, like, paper? Do we show that kind of coloring? My question is, if we're going to do a City Council seal, can we, like, add a color to the little, the white stripe extra? Is that, would that consider because it's coming from City Council? Or do we not want to get into that kind of extra?
Well, tonight's discussion is concerning the brand colors that you're looking at, the Burbank B logo. That we do, to answer your question, though, we do change that color on the city seal depending on what we're using it for. Sometimes it's in silver, could be in gold, sometimes it's in white, sometimes it's in black, and we've also used it in blue. So that color on the city seal changes depending on the use. It's not set. The normal use is blue, but that doesn't mean that we always use blue.
Okay. Well, I would say I like recommendation two because it has, it has like the full spectrum of colors from all of the other departments. But if, I mean, if it's possible, if we could open up a discussion, the little white diagonal stripe, if we could add in a silver or gold stripe instead to show that it's, you know, the seal of approval from City Council, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. Otherwise, recommendation two, I like it. It's got a fuller spectrum of colors.
Okay. To move this forward, Councilmember Schultz, your thoughts on the recommendation of the three logos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was initially drawn to recommendation number three. However, I do note that it's awfully similar, in my view, to the emblems that have been approved by the city attorney's office, the city manager's office. So just to differentiate ourselves a little bit, I think I would fall where Councilmember Anthony is and lean towards recommendation two, just to be a little different and apart from the others.
Okay. Councilmember Springer, on the recommendation for the logo? Councilmember Springer? Do we know if she's on? I don't see her.
She's muted.
She's unmuting herself. There you go.
All right. Councilmember Springer, your thoughts on the recommendation one, two, or three?
Thank you. I like one. It looks balder to-
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for weighing in. And you know, I'm looking at it now, I'm looking at the, recommendation three tends to blend in with several other departments, because a lot of the, several departments are using blue. Varyation of color blue, but nonetheless, they tend to blend in. Now, one and two make a little bit more of a presence, and I would recommend going with one. I like one. It sticks out, that orange sticks out a little bit more to me. So one would be the one.
Mr. Mayor, may I add? The recommendation three, I should note, is the standard blue logo that we are using for the overall brand. So if it's not attached to another department, that standard blue one, recommendation three, is what we would normally use.
While we're divided, I guess I'm going to have to be the tiebreaker because it's two for number one and two for number two. I actually, in the subcommittee, recommended number two, as that's, I'm going to go with the tiebreaker, because I look at number two, based on the colors, as a more inclusive of everybody in our city, of all the different, you know, races, backgrounds, religions, you name it. I feel that number two represents the City Council that was elected by the people at large. And I like the different colors versus this, number three is just pretty much blue with a little bit of a teal-greenish color. And then number one is, I look at it more as like a sunset-type color, red. So I will break the tie and go with recommendation number two, and that is the direction of this agenda item.
Thank you. I like you all.
Okay, now, let's move on to-
I like, I love two.
Oh, you love two now? You're going to change your mind? So it's a 5-0 vote then? All right, peace. Peace, love, Volkswagen bus. Make love, not war. Okay, next agenda item, Ms. McFarland?
Sure. I'm going to turn everything over to Kevin, so let me just push a couple buttons here.
Okay, to be official, the last report is an update on the new city's website. Oh, correction, second to that, that's right, we're bringing back number six. I would like to invite Chief Information Officer Kevin Gray to the mic. Please present a report, sir.
Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Frudos, Vice Mayor Telemontes, council members, Kevin Gray, Chief Information Officer for the city of Burbank. I want to thank you all for allowing me to present the latest pride of the work that I do for the, for the city here. I have a lot to say about it, so, but I'll try to make this as quick and painless as possible. So bear with me while I, whoops, got to hit the right button. Share my screen. Let me know if you all see my presentation. Do you see it? All right, good. So, council members, I'm here tonight to update you all on the new city website and declare that we are ready to move to our next big step in our journey to replace our old and tired current website. First, I want to give my strongest and deepest gratitude to all of the people who were instrumental in bringing the new website to fruition. It has truly been a giant team effort, and you can see from all of these names, it's a big team. It's like a football team and a half. A few special mentions I'd like to shout out are Simone McFarland for championing the effort, and Kevin Woodruff from my team for helping shepherd the effort along from its inception. And all of our content liaisons who put their hearts and souls into this effort for months. That would include Cassidy Allen, Brady Griffin, Forrest Howell, Desiree Jimenez, Catherine Lopez, Danny Masterangelo, Mary Mosessian, Tristan Heipley, Karen Pan, Tony Rodriguez, Diana Tovar, Hazel Turubiartes, Cindy Y. Kuen, Stephen Aragon, and Zizette Mullins. So these are the phases of the new website project. These phases align with the Design Thinking Framework, which is a human-centered approach to innovation that draws from a toolkit of skills, ideas, and techniques that have been honed since the 1960s, but have found new life in this digital age and have been employed to great success by the most successful technology organizations in this era, like Google, Facebook, and Netflix, and more. We've brought this toolkit to the city of Burbank for the first time, and this is the first big product of that effort. And my declaration for you all tonight is that we are ready to move to the soft-launch phase, and I'll explain what a soft-launch is a little later. So we didn't do what many organizations sadly do in building a new website or other technology products. That's moving the old website as is to a new platform, or designing a new website based on general assumptions, or following someone else's model that may or may not fit- on general assumptions, or following someone else's model that may or may not fit the needs of our citizens. Now, we went through an extensive discovery to ensure we understood how people use our website, what their thoughts and feelings are, what they really need from our website, and what the city needs from the website. Also, we wanted to understand the competitive landscape, how some of the best city websites serve their citizens. So these are the steps of our discovery phase. We analyzed data from our current website, we analyzed call data into the city, we looked at other top quality city websites, and conducted interviews of key stakeholders in the city, and of 25 citizens from the public. The last step is the most important because it represents the biggest departure from how we've approached this kind of thing in the past. User interviews enable us to develop empathy for our users, meaning enabling us to better identify with or understand their perspective, their experiences, or their motivations. And it enables us to design with their thoughts and frustrations in mind. As an IT department, we still have much to do to hone the knowledge, skills, and capabilities to continue to apply the new framework we're working with, but I feel good about this first stretch goal we're about to achieve. You'll hear more in the future about our efforts to evolve and improve our IT team and be trailblazers for all things technology and process improvement for our residents, businesses, all city departments, and the general public. So, from all of that information and data we gathered in the discovery phase, we developed personas. Personas are representations of the people that use our website. Personas are reminders to us to design for a variety of users. They are representative of the types of behaviors that we design for with a range of needs and pain points. They're based on the real world people that we interview. So our primary personas are Amy, the average citizen. She's the redhead in the top left corner there. She's a self-server, goal-oriented, less informed and busy. She just needs to get stuff done quick. Then there's Chantel, she's in the middle. She's, Chantel, the community activist. She's involved, advocates for issues that are important to her, has time to dedicate to the city. She may be retired, a stay-at-home mom, or a motivated business owner. Then we have Xavier, the young citizen. He's in the top right corner. He's young and motivated, social media-driven, loves community events, and can become a very involved citizen. Then we have Joe, the job seeker. He's in the bottom right corner. He's focused on looking for a job, likely entry level, not really sure what he's looking for. And then lastly, we have Barb, the business owner. She's not too involved, needs things to be quick and easy, wants to feel valued by the city, expects help from the city in establishing a business in the city. So these are the primary personas that we designed the new website for. Moving on, so the brand is the foundation of the look and feel for the website. And our brand and our new website design incorporate seven of the top 10 modern design trends in existence today. That would include a simplified logo, breaking letters, simplified color code, vintage style, shapes and geometry, playing with lines and creativity and developing patterns. The play button, the most iconic hidden-in-plain-site symbol of media since, not the cassette, but the reel-to-reel tape player of the 1940s, features prominently in our design. We use image as well in the new design to guide our users and describe our messaging. The design scales automatically, it looks as good on the desktop, or it looks as good and works as well on mobile as it does on the desktop. Search is prominently placed so that people can use it to find what they're looking for quickly and easily. And then we have the I want to icons. So a common theme among all of our interviewees was that they go to the website because they need to do something, or they want to do something, not necessarily because they want to read a bunch of stuff about the city. So moving on, we built the website on an inexpensive, industry-leading, digital experience platform that will serve as the primary citizen-facing digital portal for all of the city's digital products. A digital experience platform is an integrated cohesive piece of technology that is designed to enable the creation, management, delivery, and enhancement of digital experiences for different customer journeys, whether on mobile, desktop computers, laptops, tablets, or whatever. It can serve all of the digital portal needs for all of the departments of the city, including BWP, who represents the most complex and highest amount of commerce that needs to be facilitated. And we're starting that conversation with them to ensure this platform can meet those needs for them. We deployed in cloud infrastructure, which lessens the burden of support and management, and provides us with flexibility and scalability. We can grow without additional capital investment. We built templates and components to serve to help ensure a common look and feel throughout the website, regardless of who's providing the content. And of course, council members, we included your feedback via the PIO subcommittee along the way. So the image you see on the slide here is what's called a wireframe. It's an early rough rendition of the homepage. So, for months now, the content team has been engaged in a curated content migration, meaning everything was rewritten. Everybody went through training to learn how to use the new digital experience platform and learn the fundamentals of writing for web. It's not the same as writing a staff report. The team built the website, component by component. So now we're ready for a soft launch. A soft launch is a beta testing release to a select group of people to kick the tires of the new website and take it for a test drive. Beta testing plays a key role in ensuring new digital products meet user needs. It's the final round of testing before a product is finally released to a wide audience, and it's done by the public. So those that are still watching the city council meeting and paying attention to my slides have the current address for the new website and can join our beta testing team among another select group of people from the city and the public that we will inform of the new website. We'll take feedback from them and make adjustments and refinements before the final release, which is when we will replace the URL, www.burbankca.gov, or just Burbankca.gov, with the new website. And the target date for that full release is April 15th. So the website will be dynamic, ever-improving, will practice a continuous incremental improvement, meaning we'll continually take feedback, learn from it, and look for ways to improve our citizens' experiences. One of the big improvements we're looking to do in the future is to add an AI help bot that can dynamically answer some of people's most asked questions without them having to call or search the website. So with that, I'd like to take you through a lightning-quick tour of the new homepage, and then Simone and I will try to answer any questions that you have. So with that, do you all see the website now? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Good. So council members, you'll see, this is our new breaking news banner that will show up on the top of the website when we have quick announcements we need to make. I believe you're all quite aware of my fondness for our simple logo, the vibrant simplified color code that you'll see throughout the website, here, the breaking letters, and the vintage style with the iconic play button, hidden in plain sight, and hidden in the background as you scroll down through the website here. For feedback and our beta testing, and for always, we have this feedback widget here where people can tell us, I like something, I don't like something, I have an idea, send it right to us. You see search prominently placed right here, and it works well. You see the I want to icons. These are the top five things that we found from our statistics and interviews that people wanted from our website. Now, the line at Passport Services is like, like the line to get a croissant at Lou, the French-on-the-Block in the Media District. I don't know if you've ever been down there, but it's always a long line. But now, if you want to get a passport, bam, you just go right here, and you are straight to Passport Services. You don't have to dig around and find that the clerk's office actually runs Passport Services. It's right there for you. Back to the homepage, you see how the play button here forms rectangles and shapes and geometry, and the, and the rectangles here, and how the design plays with lines and creativity to create a recognizable pattern that is consistent throughout the website. Our hottest, newest, latest announcements featured here at the top. The latest news is super easy to find, right down here. A few weeks ago, I heard a lady call into public comment one day and said that she couldn't find what days and times, events, and meetings were scheduled on our current website. Well, as you can see here, that will no longer be a problem. Our community activist, Chantel, can get involved in anything she wants to, right here. Boards, commissions, employment rise, all of it, and more. Under business, everything for Barb, our business owner. And Joe, the job seeker, right here. Doesn't have to know that HR is a part of Management Services to find information about jobs in the city. Back to the homepage, you know, before I forget, they can get it all in Spanish. Now, I can't read Armenian, but that looks like it might be Armenian. So with, with that, council, I'm done. Thank you for listening, and I'll take any questions that you have.
Councilmembers, this is a note and file, but comments, questions, we have one more item this evening to tackle on. Councilman Springer, Councilmember Springer?
Yes. Thank you very much for your report. It looks great, and I look forward to using it. On the 15th, right?
The 15th is when we plan to go live. Now, if we get a whole bunch of feedback and have to fix a bunch of stuff, it might delay us a little bit, but that's our target date.
Thank you.
Any comments?
No, did I mention Mayor Futos and Vice Mayor Telemontes? We, you know, we hope you saw, we found, we heated your feedback from the PIO Subcommittee and found a way to incorporate the city seal prominently at the top of the homepage without it clashing with the brand logo.
At least it's not at the bottom.
It's still there, too.
Yeah, I saw it at the bottom. Was it also at the top? I missed it.
Yes, yes, so if you, yeah, it's right there in what we call the hero image of the landscape.
All right. Any other comments? Councilmember Schultz, I saw your hand up earlier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gray, excellent presentation. You and I have talked about this a great deal, and I think you know my excitement for the new website. I want to thank you and the team. Thank you, Ms. McFarland, too. I just, it's great. This looks fantastic, and I think that by having a more intuitive, interactive website, we're gonna be opening the doors to City Hall by making it easier for people to connect to resources. The only question I have, and I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, but I believe there may also be an app or something to pair with this in development in the next couple months that could also make it easier for people to request services and report incidences.
Yes, that's coming in the, in the coming months. It's, it's going to leverage the same sort of design theory that we did for the website. But you're getting a little ahead of me. Give us a little time, it'll be out in the not-too-distant future.
Really noted, thank you.
Cool. Councilmember Anthony? Any thoughts?
I think it looks great. I was able to peruse it the other day, and I could go on and on about how much trouble I had on the previous website. I've had so many bookmarks, I'm not gonna do it. This looks great.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, I think it's exciting. We're moving forward in a new direction, user-friendly. You know, it's, it looks very nice. Colors are appealing, very soft. And Councilmember Schultz, we weren't supposed to say that, we were told not to mention.
Yeah, they told the Subcommittee not to let the cat out of the bag.
My apologies, I wasn't on the Subcommittee.
But no, thank you very much, Kevin, and Simone, and the rest of the staff, everybody that had little, you know, bits and pieces to bring it together as a whole. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
My only two cents, Mr. Gray, is I'm looking at your soft launch, and you got the little I want to. If you can, if, just for consideration to the team, a lot of stuff that comes up to a lot of folks is, where do I go report graffiti? Make that an easier access. Where do I report bulky items or illegal dumping? Those are quality-of-life issues that, you know, hopefully people can push the button, put in the information.
Yes, let me, I know I rushed through it, but let me show you again really quick here, sir. Reporter problem, number four on the list, right here at the top.
All right, thank you. Go Raiders!
Yes, go Raiders. And I'm sorry, whoops, I accidentally hit it.
Okay, perfect, I saw it, I just saw it, you just brought it up.
Yeah, yeah, and you see the, you see the city seal here, and yeah.
That's right, that was, that was special for Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's a note and file. Councilmembers, pull out your, your item number six. We will, the consent calendar today was the approval of a three-year agreement for the Burbank Bus Transit Operations and Maintenance Services with MV Transportation, Inc., by the Community Development Department. I'd like to let the Vice Mayor start this off since he wanted to pull this for discussion. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a few questions. I don't think we need a report. We've got a report in front of us. I hope everybody gets a chance to read it. But obviously, we've, we've been with this company, there were nine, nine people that submitted interest in responding to the RFP. Only two were really interested. And we've dealt with this, this company for the last five years. We had a three-year agreement and then two-year extensions, or one, two one-year extensions, and made a total of five. And that's what's being proposed again, this coming round for them. What my main question is, what have we learned from the first five years that we're changing, that we're changing to what we're going forward, what is before us tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, David Criskey with the Community Development Department. I think the biggest item that we learned, that we tried to incorporate into this agreement is for some more flexibility with deploying the service based on changes in transit and changes in council direction or prerogative with transit. We have a much wider window in the amount of hours that we buy from MV under the proposed agreement, more so than the current. So we were a bit hamstrung, for instance, with the pandemic, when transit ridership fell drastically, and we wanted to reduce service to match that reduced lower demand, and we could only fall to a certain level. And so we've, we've learned, and the reason for that is, if you fall, if you, if you buy more or less hours within a certain range, they can come back and renegotiate the terms and the price. So we have a wider band for which we can either increase or decrease service and still be under the same terms and the same price per hour for the agreement. So I would say that's probably the biggest item. The other thing we did is we tightened up instances where if we want to, and I don't, we're not contemplating this, but if we wanted to change direction in a big way about how we deploy transit, you know, there's so many disruptions and new technologies and new ways of deploying transit. If we wanted to take a bigger turn and look at a different way of providing transit, we have a little more flexibility in our contract now than we did previously. So that would probably be the biggest thing we've learned. The other thing that I have learned in doing this a few times is companies that have facilities nearby for servicing our buses automatically have a bit of an advantage over folks that have to come in and secure a new location because there's only so many industrial properties in the surrounding area that can service a CNG bus with all the requirements and the fire safety and the size that's needed. So I think that's a symptom, or a symptom of us only getting two bids is because it's difficult to break in and procure those, those... difficult to break in and procure those, those offsite locations because we as a city don't have our own transit maintenance yard. So we have to rely on the contractor to go secure that. And MV has, they actually are going to have a better location under the new agreement than they do under the current. Glendale has moved into their new facility, but their old, MV's older facility that was used for Glendale B Line is now available and it's much closer and we can consolidate storage and maintenance in one location and will reduce the travel time that the buses have to take when they go in for maintenance off the routes. It's, it's much closer here just in Glendale versus our previous one was much farther field.
Mike, Mike?
David, this company's being used by Glendale and LA City as well?
Yes.
So that keeps it local. In regards to a number of rides per year, pre-COVID and then during the COVID, it almost was 50%. It cut it from 800 to 900 a year, I mean, a day prior to COVID and down to 400 to 500 a day. So that, that affects revenue as well, right, obviously?
Yes, and furthermore, we are, we're still in a fare-free situation. So we don't get a lot of money from our fares, but we are still in a situation where we're not collecting fares because of wanting to maintain social distance. You know, as things start improving, I know we may be going into orange tier soon, we may be able to back off on some of that. And so what it also looks like and what our Transportation Commission has been looking at is, is our cost per ride numbers look really bad right now because our costs stay relatively constant, but the number of people riding has gone drastically down. We did do a few things, as I mentioned, when the pandemic first started, we did cut service back from 28,000 hours a year to 22,000 hours a year. So that brought our costs down and that helped bring the, the cost per hour still higher, but not as bad as it could be. So we were, we were trying to be financially flexible to try and save money. But yes, our ridership has somewhat recovered and the region's ridership has recovered a bit, but you know, a lot of people are still staying at home. Many of our, our office workers are still working from home. That was our bread and butter service and until that returns, we're going to be seeing lower numbers going forward.
Okay. Now, on page six of the staff report under fiscal impact, right in the middle says, "Staff will ask for city, for city council to budget for up to 28,000 service hours as part of the fiscal year 21, 22 budget." So what is the purpose for that? Were anticipating the increase?
So we, each year, we, we forecast the number of hours that we're going to, to use to serve service. 28,000 was our, our baseline, pre-COVID. That is the number of hours needed to run our three routes at our previous frequencies and, and times of the day. We're going to be coming back to you to recommend that you budget that amount with the expectation that ridership starts to recover in fiscal year 21, 22. Of course, the council can modify that as part of the budget process and as I mentioned, we can go, we can go as low as 17,000 hours and as high as about 30,000 hours with the new contract, so we have flexibility. If we don't use those hours, if ridership stays low and we don't ramp up our, our frequencies again, that money would not be spent. It would fall back into our local return and would be available the following year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to use it just or lose it. I don't want to use it, okay? I don't, I want to be cognizant of the ridership. If I see too many empty buses, you know, like the mayor has asked before in the past, I see all kinds of empty buses going downtown, going around the city. So explain that to me and you're asking for more hours. So just keep that in mind.
Yes.
In regards to the, your ask of 28,000 hours. But you said that pre-COVID, we were, we were doing 28,000 for the three lines?
Yes.
And now moving forward, according to the staff report, 22,000 is going to cover the two lines and the pink line is going to be covered by the 3,100 plus?
No, and that may have been confusing. What, what the 22,000? Yes, the 22,000 hours is, allows us to run the service that we're running now, which is three routes. Two of the three routes are reduced in frequency a fair amount to represent the fact that less people are riding. And then the pink route, we reduced it a little bit, but as we may have mentioned before, we still kept the frequency because as, as you know from talking transit, you know, frequent reliable service gets people to be able to depend on it. We didn't cut back the pink route too much. And so the 22,000 hours keeps us at our current COVID levels. The other part of the contract that you're referencing with the 3,200 hours is there's a separate set of pricing that MV has provided if we want to expand to weekend service. And the reason we have that in there, and it's, it's an option, we don't have to execute it, is because as part of Next Gen, one of Metro's routes on Olive Avenue is going to be eliminated. And they were covering our Olive Avenue Transit Service for us on the weekend because the pink route only runs during the week. Metro and as part of Vice Mayor Telemontes's discussions with the Service Council commented when that deletion was being proposed that, that we were going to lose service on the weekends. And so Metro has come back and we're currently working with Metro staff to find a way for them to offset and pay for us to run service on the weekend instead of them. We can do it more cheaply, so they still save some money and we get the full coverage of seven-day service and we would provide it with our pink route rather than having the Metro 155 run instead. And so that option would allow us to run on the weekend should we come to an agreement with Metro and should the council wish to expand that one route.
So that 3,200 hours, you're going to take that back? It's not going to be?
The 3,200, the 3,200 hours would only be, would only be used if we're getting reimbursed by Metro to pay for it. And so that would be in addition to the 22,000.
Okay, so explain that 3,200, I'm sorry. Maybe it's getting late.
Sure.
So if Metro's going to pay for it, why do we have to do anything with the 3,200?
The, the 3,200 hours is the estimated number of hours to run that, that weekend service.
Right.
MV is going to charge us a higher rate because we don't operate on the weekend at all, so it costs them more money to have dispatchers and, and folks out on the weekend. So that's why we have that separate set of hours with a different rate.
Yeah, I see other rates, I saw that.
Yeah, it's, it's higher. And so we would pay MV if we wanted to run that weekend service and use those rates and use those hours, but Metro would be reimbursing us for that. And so we would get that, we would get that reimbursed.
Okay, so it's an offset, it's a cost offset.
Yes.
We're giving MV, from our, from our kid even, Metro's reimbursing us.
Yes, and that's, that's why it's an option in the MV contract because we would only execute that option if we come to an arrangement for Metro to reimburse us.
All right, that's good. Real quick again, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to get through this. Attachment 1-1, item number three, "Under vehicle revenue service hour rate and maximum amount of compensation, city will compensate contractor for the vehicle revenue service hours the contractor operates a Burbank bus minus any fares collected." What has been our history over the last, pre-COVID, of fares collected and who, who accounts for those fares collected? Who, who zeros it out? This isn't what you got, trust me.
So it's, it's in a couple places and it's changed over the five years. So I would say when we started with MV Five years ago, our fares were either MetroLink ticket reimbursements. So if you have a MetroLink ticket and you are coming into town and then you're transferring onto the pink route, you show your MetroLink ticket and you get a free ride. So there's no fare, no cash fare being transmitted to us. MetroLink's paying us on the backend every, a few times a year for those transfers. And then we had cash fare. So somebody boards the bus, they have their dollar, they put it in the bus. MV employees collect that money at the end of the month, they deposit it, they account for it and then they, they basically pay us that fare as a deduction from our, our price. And then what has happened in the last couple of years is tap. So tap has started to become prominent where you take your Metro Tap card and you just tap to board. More and more of our cash fare is now through tap and in that case, Metro's reimbursing us. So they're accounting for all the taps into their system and they're paying us out for the revenue that's collected, cash fare from, from the Metro Tap system. So it's now in kind of three places and we, you know, we, we receive annual or monthly reporting from Metro and MetroLink on the revenue that they're reimbursing us through those programs and then MV provides an accounting every month as part of their invoice of the cash, the number of rides that were cash fare versus the number of rides that were other fare.
So somebody signs up from the, from the city side? Somebody signs up on that?
We, we review their, their ridership data based on the boardings that is reported by the, by the drivers and that accounts for how many, how many riders are cash, how many riders are tap, how many riders are transfers.
You know, and I bring this up because it's not a matter of trust or distrust. I trust MV, no question about it, but it's just a matter of good business, doing good business. Anytime, and we've heard it over and over again, anytime you deal with cash monies, things happen. And like I said, it's not a matter of trust or distrust, it's just a matter of good business from the city side and that's what, as a council member, I have to look for. I mean, that's one of my duties, my charges when I get elected. Make sure that everything is running smoothly, make sure that everything is on the up and up. All council members abide by that as well. So anyway, and you're saying that we've dealt with MV for a lot of years before the five?
I want to say we have been with them for five years in this current contract period that's ending and I think we were with them for maybe three years prior to that. And so we've gone out to bid, this is now the third time that we've gone out to bid where MV has been the incumbent.
David, this is Joe with MV. Our partnership started in 2011.
Oh, it's been 10 years. So Mr. Escobedo, thank you for being here.
Of course.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Another question real quick, in the, the tier one rates versus the tier two rates? I mean, that's like $30 more an hour, $32 more an hour. We couldn't maintain the same tier one rates for the, for the tier two areas?
Well, and MV may be able to chime in more specifically, but the reason the rates are higher for tier two is because it's weekend operations. So right now, we're a Monday through Friday service. We don't, we don't staff, we don't, we don't have buses and drivers and road supervisors and dispatchers working on the weekends. If we were to instantiate and begin weekend service, we'd have to bring, or MV would have to bring in those resources to operate basically both, both the drivers and the back office, if you will, during the weekend. And so that's a new characterization of, of operations that we don't currently do. What, what I didn't want to do is, is roll all of that into one price, especially if we don't even know that we're going to run the weekend service. So I don't want to pay MV for the possibility of running weekend service and having them build that into their, their one weekday rate if we never, if we never go to weekend service.
That sounds smart. Okay, Mr. Krisky, thank you. Mr. Escobedo, nice to meet you. Thank you very much. I don't know if you want to introduce yourself to the council.
No, just real quickly, I'm Joe Escobedo. I'm the Senior Vice President of Business Development for MV Transportation. I do want to say that on behalf of our owners, Board of Directors, Senior Leadership Team and our local and regional team, that we're honored to once again be your staff recommendation. We look forward to extending our partnership that we started in 2011 and continue to provide a safe, reliable and courteous service to the riders of these important services. So we're honored, thank you.
Thank you for being part of the Burbank family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions, council members? Okay, I'll weigh in last. My only question is I'm tired of seeing those empty buses on Buena Vista. It could be rush hour and there's two or three passengers. It's unsat. So if I had to support giving you the additional 3,200 hours today, I would be respectful on the agenda item, no, the buses are empty. Bottom line is, I just think that we got to really look at the routes or the times, but I still think we're just spinning our wheels. It's the same thing for seven years, you know, at least for me, for the last three years, because that's when we kind of changed. But bottom line is, you know, if I don't see, you know, 15, 20 people on a 45-passenger bus, how can I justify continuing to spend that money? How much more are we going to struggle to try to get people, at least on the Buena Vista route, because that's the one I see every day? So that's my beef on that. That's enough said with that.
I guess Mr. Krisky's going to change that route. No more Buena Vista.
Well, A, the council has asked us to look at the green route. That's the one that's in the West Media District or the West Magnolia Park down in the Media District to see if we should serve Magnolia Park. And then we do need to look at the orange route. Its, its main purpose is to serve NoHo Station to the airport. When it goes by the mayor's house, it's on the backside of that loop, which has less ridership. However, the one other interesting thing, we do get persistent requests and it's difficult to serve these, that we don't have good north-south service. And in fact, on Buena Vista, we don't have direct Buena Vista service all the way through and that's a major arterial that goes north to south and no one serves it and we never have, Metro never has either. We've always, we've gotten persistent questions about how can I get, you know, from the Media District up to the Empire Center? How do I get from Burrows to my home, you know, at, you know, Niagara and Jeffries or at Pacific? So we do have a north-south hole, which is kind of one of our longer-term reviews. But yes, you happen to live on the backside of that loop and we definitely understand the council's direction to keep these running efficiently. The council did great work with the pink route and Councilmember Springer, who rides it often or did ride it often, was, can, I think, can, can speak to that. Prior to COVID, we were on a tremendous upswing. It was more riders than I had anticipated. I think it's more than our commission anticipated. It was really a success and the pandemic put a speed hump in a process that you directed us to work towards, which is to apply those same principles to all our routes. And that's where we need to get back to. We just had our, our COVID-19 speed bump and we, you know, we're going to be getting back to, to looking at it, at these and evaluating them.
Sounds like we need a trolley bus for Magnolia, that's all I can tell you. Okay, and my last and final question, could we enter in a joint MOU maintenance service with Glendale? Instead of finding a third person to do our maintenance, have you and Patrick and, you know, the team looked at, you know, set an MOU agreement, if it saves us money, to have the Glendale, since they've got buses, to do our maintenance versus getting our own maintenance?
So I would answer that we've had some very informal discussions internally and even a little bit with Glendale Transit Staff about how we could combine our resources, not necessarily just maintenance, but you know, more, could we provide more comprehensive transit that serves the, the two cities by combining some aspects of Burbank Bus? So we are looking at that. Again, one of the reasons why we, we want to stick with a three-year term and why we want to be flexible is because we want to talk about those things. And the electrification study that's underway, that you may recall, you signed an MOU with this time last year, I think is going to force our hand a little bit because that electrification infrastructure is really expensive and I think, again, we don't have a, we don't have a maintenance yard of our own, Glendale does. I think we're going to need to start looking with our partners to see how we can combine forces because that electrification's going to bring a lot of expenses, hopefully grand offset, but new expenses and new infrastructure that we're going to have to plan for. So yes, it's definitely an idea that we've talked about and that we're going to need to continue to talk about, especially in looking at transit electrification.
Okay. Ms. Jimenez, if you can call for the vote on item six, since it was on a consent calendar? We'll go ahead and do the vote now.
Sure. All righty. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer? Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes. This brings us up to our last item for the evening. This is a time for a brief council comments, including reporting out on council committee assignments. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wednesday, March 17th, I attended alongside you, the Burbank Police Commission. They had two items on their agenda. One was further consideration of decoupling the animal shelter from BPB. They chose not to move forward with that. There was also an update on the Community Academy and I'll leave it to, to the mayor to add any further commentary on that commission report. Friday, March 19th, I had the pleasure of taking a tour of the Burbank YMCA and specifically what they had done COVID-19 safety. what they had done, COVID-19 safety protocols that they had implemented. But what I really wanted to draw all of my colleagues' attention and the community's attention to is the Social Impact Center that they're going to be opening soon. And it's, it's just terrific. It's going to be a safe space, offering life skills workshop, homework help, and referral services for HIV testing, looking up the list here. So we have HIV testing, mental health counseling, homelessness prevention, and it's just going to be a wonderful addition to the community. So really looking forward to that opening. Thursday, March 25th, I attended alongside Councilmember Anthony, the Valley Economic Alliance. There was discussion about revisions to the board guidelines, but quite frankly, nothing that's pertinent to the council tonight, but we'll continue to report back if there is anything. Friday, March 26th, had a meeting with the CEO of the Burbank Chamber of Commerce about a restaurant campaign, I believe they'll be bringing forward to council at some point. And then earlier today, I had a chance to meet with representatives from Amazon regarding their new delivery center here in Burbank and just to educate myself a little further about the number and quantity of jobs that they'll be offering, benefits, salary, as well as traffic mitigation plans and the company's commitment to climate protection. So a little more information coming down the pipe about that. I think that's everything I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about a meeting I had with the Chamber of Commerce leadership and their focus on really tackling, you know, I mentioned it earlier, the, the restaurant issue and trying to get our mom and pops back up and running again. And I think it's such a, it's such a huge component of what we should be doing. And I, I'm very excited to, to see what they put forward and just to continue with, with that conversation. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Thank you. I attended Advisory Council on Disabilities meeting and the Senior Board meeting and had a meeting with Cindy Peace with Cultural Art Commission, just to catch up, and also with Sarkis Simonian of ANCA with about five of their members. And that was, it was very nice just to catch up with them. And I had, you know, like four economic recovery task force meetings, you know, including the restaurant campaign and a nice meeting with James Nguyen and two others for the, they're involved with the racial equity subcommittee meeting. It was just a very, very interesting meeting and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I had a transportation meeting with the San Fernando Valley Cog, community meeting with California Assembly Member Laura Friedman. I also had a Skype interview with a reporter of the U.S. Armenian Station regarding the resolve for independence of the Arts Stock. We had an economic development task force meeting. I also had an LA County Division Legislative Committee and Board of Directors. The LA County Division is, is accepting applications for State Director and Secretary Treasurer of the Division. So if anybody's interested, any of my colleagues, I am the Chair of the Nominating Committee. So just letting you know. I also had a, a Zoom meeting with the Southern California Director of High-Speed Rail. She's new, she's been on board only about several months. She's from Long Beach, so it's a neighbor of ours. So she's very excited about High-Speed Rail. She's very excited about Burbank. There's a lot of, a lot of possibilities for Burbank in, moving forward. And let me just add, economic recovery task force meetings are underway and going well. Meeting attendees are engaged and appreciate the opportunity for the public forum. So far, we have met with the following groups, local Burbank restaurants, Burbank Chamber of Commerce, and the Burbank young professionals. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with the businesses in Magnolia Park. So when, when, you know, when I hear my colleagues mention about restaurants and the mom and pops, we're, we're doing that. I mean, we're going, we're going, you know, we're, we're engaging them, we're finding out what the best way of moving forward with them, other than money, you know, obviously. It all sometimes solves problems, some, sometimes creates problems. So the economic task force, which myself and Councilmember Springer are on, are doing it and we're working it, so we'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll go back to Wednesday, March 17th, the Police Commission. I, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if that's come back to the council, but they had a difficulty on which rules to follow. It comes up several times. They're, wanted to kind of, they didn't really know what public comment rules they needed to follow, that, you know, should they have their own five minutes or do they follow the council's, you know, our, our three-minute rule? But they spent the whole, pretty much 90 minutes going back and forth. So I think they need a little bit of direction on how to conduct a public meeting and using public comment because it was, got, it got pretty, it was pretty wild, some of the thoughts that they wanted and...
I'll, I'll follow up with the staff.
Would you?
Yeah.
Thank you. I also attended the meeting with our Assembly Member Laura Friedman. I attended the Infrastructure Oversight Board, nothing to report back to the council. I did attend our Friday special closed session meeting. I did have a conference call with Jason Maruka for an update of what's going on from the supervisor's office to the city of Burbank with COVID-19. I'm still pushing hard to make sure, you know, we get all the resources here. And then I also had a telephonic meeting with the CEO from the Burbank Chamber, talking about the grant funding that's coming out to make sure they're getting the word out and see where they're at in rolling out our hopefully new marketing campaign to shop and dine and play in Burbank to really get the message out to support our local businesses. And that's all I have to report. Councilmembers, this is a time for an introduction of any agenda items for a future council meeting. I saw Sharon first, followed by Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. I'd like an agenda item about the ownership, the forms of ownership of the ADU activity that's going on in Burbank.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I've had a couple, several questions asked of me, when we can possibly vaccinate the entire community or make it available for the entire community? I know we're reaching a point here of April 1st, 50 and above can be vaccinated and they're, they're looking at April 16, for anybody over 16 years old can be vaccinated. So I'd like, I'd just like to hear back what possibilities we can have here in Burbank to be able to, you know, provide the vaccine to the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like, my request is to bring back for a future agenda item, a discussion of Assembly Bill 452, and specifically whether we should direct our mayor to submit a letter in support of that. Assembly Bill 452 is titled Pupil Safety Rental Notification Concerning Firearms Safety Laws.
Great. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to do a first step, if possible, on reducing parking fines for people who can prove that they've been impacted by the pandemic. I know people are stuck at home, so they're parking more. That's okay.
Mr. City Manager?
Did you get that? Yes, I, I did have that. They do have an appeal process right now, but we can provide a, a, a information related to an expanded...
Okay. Yeah.
First step, first step.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I would like to request an agenda item to discuss an updated city ordinance regarding drive-through restaurants. See where we're at, see if there's something that we should on a one-step, two-step. Another one would be on a one-step, two-step neighborhood protection for Orchard and Olive, see what's recommended by staff as the restaurant opens. And, you know, as concerns comes up, I like to make sure that this is on an agenda item so we can see what our options are. And I did ask you about the Boards and Commissions' rules regarding public comment. Just one standard, you could probably do it administratively through your staff. That is it. We will now adjourn our council meeting. We now adjourn in memory of Arthur Popkin to Tuesday, April the 13th at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city's webpage, burbankca.gov/ecomments. By emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Or by calling in directly at the council meeting at 818-238-3335. Good night, Burbank community. Good night, council members. Good night, staff.